Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Thursday, September 14th, study session of the Boulder City Council. I'm Councilmember Folkerts, and I want to thank you for joining us tonight. I'm going to start off with a little announcement about our Better Public Meetings project. The city of Boulder is partnering with the National Civic League on a nationwide effort to make council meetings more engaging, satisfying for everyone who participates. As part of this effort, we want to hear about your experiences with our meetings. We invite community members who are either in person or online for council meetings, starting tonight and running through our December 7th meeting to rate your experience. We have an online scorecard that takes about two minutes to fill out. The link to it is on the screen now, and for the online audience, we are putting the QR link and code in the chat. You may complete this scorecard once for each time you participate in a council meeting over the next three months. So, tonight, we have two items. Our first will be an update and request for direction regarding the intergovernmental agreement with the Boulder Public Library District, and our second is the 2024 Recommended Budget Discussion. Before we get into our work items, I would like to outline how this meeting will be conducted. We will review staff's presentations for each of the items, and we will have time for questions. At the end of the presentation, we will conduct our council discussion with staff. If you have questions, please wait for the staff to complete their presentation. We'll now turn to our city manager, Nuria Rivera Vander... Yeah, I can normally pronounce your name just fine. Nuria Rivera Vandermeide to introduce our first item.
Thank you so much, council member, and I was commenting today to staff that in my other cities, at some point, it just got down to Nuria, right? So, it was a bit of a tongue twister there. As you know, council, and thanks so much for the opportunity to talk about this issue today as we seek guidance. As you know, we have started our negotiations with the newly formed library district and come before you to get direction on two main issues. I want to first thank staff who have been working hard to make this as seamless a transition as possible for not just the district, but importantly, for our own staff that will soon be transitioning over to a new employer. And secondly, I want to acknowledge that we've heard from many in our community about our wonderful library facilities. I want to say out loud that we too very much appreciate the love and history of our library buildings. We also know our newly formed Library Board of Trustees feel the same way and will be wonderful stewards of our libraries in the future. As with many decisions, there are multiple perspectives on how to achieve common goals, and how you would like us to achieve those goals is exactly the reason we're here today. So with that, I'll turn it over to David Gere.
Thank you, Nuria. Good evening, members of council. I'm David Gere with the City Attorney's Office, and I'm going to provide a short update with where the city is at with its efforts to separate the municipal library and transfer the assets and responsibilities to the new library district. With me tonight is our staff team, and maybe staff team could turn on their cameras for a moment if you haven't already. In addition to Nuria is Chris Messchuck from the City Manager's Office, Teresa Taylor Tate, and Janet Michaels from the City Attorney's Office, and Kara Skinner from the Finance Department. Also present and available for questions this evening are Kim Seder, who is council for the library district, as well as Johnny Teeter, who is the president of the Library District Board of Trustees. So, if maybe you could bring up my slides and take me to slide two, please. So first, I'd like to look back a little bit of where we have been. In 2018, the city council accepted the Boulder Public Library Master Plan. That master plan set into motion a complete and thorough evaluation of future library funding options and a broad-based community discussion around the complex question of the library's long-term financial sustainability to determine the best path forward. The Library Master Plan includes a great deal of capital priorities, including new branch libraries, as well as maintaining and upgrading existing facilities. Adequate and equitable distribution of the cost of library services was a major theme in the master plan. It presented a range of options to address the long-term financial sustainability of library to increase funding. Among the options presented included the exploration of a library district, which could include areas outside the city limits. Since the adoption of the master plan, many of these options have been explored with the assistance of all of you, the city council, our library commission, the library district advisory committee, and of course, the community. Next slide, please. The council passed a resolution to form the district in 22. The county commissioners did not pass a similar resolution. After this first formation effort failed, a group of residents brought forward a petition to put the question of the library district formation and a property tax to fund it to a vote. The ballot measure was approved by the voters within the district boundaries in November of 22. Since then, the Board of Trustees has been seated and an interim IGA has been approved. The city continues to operate the library during the transition that we are presently in. The city and the library districts are in discussions about how to complete the separation of the library from the city. Many of the issues, such as information, technology, and employment, are highly technical in nature and, to some extent, resolve themselves. Next slide, please. But there are some issues that are community and policy related. These are the issues that staff would like some feedback from the council tonight so that we can continue to work out a mutually agreeable separation arrangement between the city and the district. Those issues include the selection process for the Board of Trustees and the disposition of the library district's real property. So before I go into, if you wouldn't mind, the next slide, please. Before I go into... Oh, I'm sorry, we're one ahead. If you could go to slide five. Before I go into the two issues... Can you go up one more?
You mean the other direction, don't you?
Yeah, you're going deeper. You're ruining the punchline.
One more.
Yeah.
There you go.
There you go. Thanks so much. Before I go into these two issues, I'd like to say something about the assumptions that we have considered as we've been moving forward on these separation discussions. First, the library services will no longer be a core city function. The assets of the library are community assets that have been paid for by the taxpayers. We are trying to avoid any unnecessary entanglements between the library district and the city while still operating in a place of collaboration. The library district will be governed by the district trustees with such oversight as the council and the county commissioners deem to exercise in the trustee appointment process. And of course, we want the library district to be successful. Next slide, please. So the first question that we have is related to the appointment process for the district Board of Trustee process, or for the district trustees. And we would like to get that established in the final IGA. And we basically identified three different approaches. The first is, and these are all, I believe, statutorily are consistent with the state library law and are guided by that. But the first is to continue the process that was used to appoint the initial Board of Trustees, where there was a committee of two members of the county commissioners and two members of the council who appointed the new trustees, and those trustees were thereafter ratified by the two legislative bodies. The second approach would be to delegate that responsibility of selection to the Board of Trustees with the ratification still having the ratification by the two legislative bodies. In the discussions that we've had with the district, we also identified a bit of a hybrid approach, and this would be basically using the first option that I described and then adding, as non-voting members to the committee, two trustee members to participate in the process. The trustees would not be voting members, but rather participants in the process. And the idea being that at some point, we could reevaluate in the future whether or not this is a good approach, or if we should use another approach. We suggested in the memo three years, but of course, the length of time until we check back in on the process is, of course, flexible. So with that said, how about the next slide, please? The second question that we have for you tonight relates to the disposition of the real property owned by the city that has historically been used for library purposes. There are a number of options to be considered, including conveyances, leases, and licenses. The city owns three branches, North, Carnegie, and Reynolds. It also owns the main library in the civic area. The North Boulder Corner Library and the Reynolds Library are both leased facilities. We have discussed with the district an approach where the city would assign the three leases to the district and convey all of the fee-owned property, except for the main library. For that facility, the city would convey the building, but not the land. The land would be subject to some type of license arrangement where the city and the district would work out the sharing and management of the city-owned property in the civic area that is basically between Ninth Street and the Eleventh Street extended bike path to the east. We're looking forward to a direction related to the disposition of real property assets to the district. In addition to the approaches to conveyance, there have also been discussions about what to do with the property if it's no longer needed for library purposes. The library district has suggested that the city retains some type of right of first refusal to purchase the property if it's no longer needed for library purposes, and the staff has suggested that the city have some type or right to a reversionary interest to take the property back if it's no longer needed for library purposes. Next slide. Of course, there are other options to this as well, and these have been discussed in the past. One option would be that we simply lease one or more of the city buildings that are owned to the library district, and then have the library district be responsible for all maintenance and future capital improvements. The city would prepare a lease that we would assume would require no additional financial contribution to the city. One of the big advantages of the lease arrangement is that it allows the city to maintain a great deal of control on how those buildings are used and kept up and used or not used as collateral in financing. Next slide, please. Of course, as we've talked about, you know, there's the transfer of ownership of buildings and land. And that was what I described in terms of the staff's initial position in terms of discussions with the district. And I think that really kind of one of the, you know, the main advantages or disadvantages, depending on your perspective, is that, you know, if the library district were to own this, they have a greater deal of, a greater amount of control over how the property is used, including the ability to pledge the property for debt. All right, next slide, please. Of course, you know, you can do any combinations of options A or B. For one or more of the library facilities, the city could transfer only buildings to the library or the district, and the city owns the land. The library district, in all of these options, would be responsible for maintenance and future capital improvements. But basically, this type of option is really what's well-suited to the main library on the civic area campus, where the city and district will want to both jointly and separately use the facilities that are outside of the building. Next slide, please. So this slide is to bring us back and remind us of the questions that we look forward to on your feedback. At this point, the staff and the representatives of the district will be happy to entertain any questions that you have regarding the information that has been provided to you, both in this presentation and the memos that staff has provided to you as well. Once you're ready to dive into the questions, we have a few slides that summarize options for your convenience, and if you would like to use them, we can put them up. If you don't, then we can leave them down. So with that said, I would like to turn it back over to the city council.
So I was thinking, in the interest of time, and if no one disagrees, I think it would be worthwhile to sort of straw poll these first and then see how people are feeling, and if have questions and discussion from there, and then go back to do a final straw poll. Does anyone object to moving forward in that manner? I can't see anyone's faces, but I can't see everyone's. Junie?
Before you head to the straw poll, one of the slides, the prior slide, there was a comment or question about the city can only do a 20 and 30 years lease, and I wanted you to elaborate on that a little bit further because my thought, at least I was thinking, because 20 years is a very, very long time from now. 30 years is a very long time. Is there an opportunity for, let's say, I know you mentioned the charter, but is there an opportunity to do, let's say, 10 years? Because maybe we might want to have a lesser timeframe to come back as opposed to waiting 20 or 30 years from now, because a lot of things can happen in 30 years.
Yeah, the great question. So the information that's on that slide, those are the upper limits of lease terms. So they are maximums, not minimums, so you can always do less. Once you go over 20 years, there are limitations in the charter that require that, one, that any lease approved for more than 20 years is approved by a two-thirds vote of the council, and then the second limitation is that that significant improvements that are in the public interest would be made to the lease premises.
Thank you for that.
Okay, and then Mark, but please keep in mind trying to keep these short and factual, and then we'll do a poll.
One question only. David, in the event of a lease of either 20 or 30 years, may that lease also contain a renewal option?
I don't believe so. I think that our charter is drafted such that the council that would be in place when that lease term was over, that they would make the decision whether or not to renew.
Thank you.
All right. So can we get those options up for question number one regarding the appointment process?
Great. Emily, would you advance the slide one?
Oh, but then I'm not going to be able to see everyone's faces. Sorry.
Well, maybe we'll put it up quick, and then we can take it down at your request.
Okay.
Next, there we go.
So we have option one, where we have both council members and county commissioners forming a committee and interviewing trustees. We have option two, where the trustees themselves interview and select new trustees, or a hybrid approach. Between them. So can we take the slide down now? So, who is in favor of option one, where council members and commissioners would select the trustees? I don't see any hands. So option number two, where the trustees would select the next set of trustees? Like, I see Nicole and Matt. And then option number three, the hybrid approach? So that's seven. In support of the hybrid approach, does anyone want to ask further questions or delve into that more deeply? Nicole?
Just wanted to check. It sounded like we could kind of set this, whichever option we choose, set it in place for a bit, set a time when we're going to check in on that process and potentially revisit. So whichever way we go, is that a part of it?
We would like direction on that.
While I have the mic, can I provide, I think, three years seems reasonable to me, if we're going with the hybrid approach, to check in on three years and see where we're at.
And I believe that was staff's recommendation. Yeah. Aaron?
Yeah, I agree with that three-year timeframe as well. Wonder if we might straw poll that one, since that was the recommendation.
Yeah, I will. And just a second, I'll let Rachel ask a quick question.
I'm just going to also give a nod to the three-year recommendation and then sort of firming that up.
Okay, let's straw poll that. For three years, and then we check back in. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's unanimous. Great. Any follow-up questions before we move on to looking at conveyance or lease options for library property?
Great direction from the staff perspective, so we're ready to move on.
Perfect. Can we bring up that slide again that has options, sort of the options that we're looking at?
Next one.
For the library property? Okay. So here, we have option A being leasing all of the build, all of the properties that the city currently owns. Option B being transferring just the building for Main, but the land in the building for the other three branches. And option C being leasing Main and transferring the land in the building for the other three branches. Okay. So can we bring back up everyone's faces? So the straw poll, option A, leasing all of the branch libraries. Who is in favor of that option? So I see one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay. Option B, the staff recommendation, transferring Main, just the building, and then transferring the land and buildings for the other properties. Who would be in favor of that option? That's two. And then option C, sort of the combination. And then option C, sort of the combination of just leasing main. And conveying the land and buildings for the other three branches. Any supporters there? I think I'm missing one vote.
The only person who did not vote because the six already won if we're doing this one direction, so.
Yeah, fair. All right. Given where the straw polls landing, does anyone want to speak to the, ask further questions or speak to, um, their position? Matt, I see your hand up.
Thanks, Lauren. Um, I, I would, uh, if we're going to do the lease, I, I would suggest us doing it for a short term, maybe only five years or so. Um, I, I think that part, part of the reason why I'm choosing leases, there's still a lot for the district to settle out and figure out for the next couple of years. And I think that the change of conveyance, I don't think we foreclosed on that in, in perpetuity. So I think having just a little, a five year period where we lease and then we come back to it when things have settled. I think would be a good point. I worried if you do it twenty or thirty, we all know that we don't renegotiate leases. And if it's a thirty year lease till the twenty ninth year and the eleventh month of that lease, um, and no one comes to the table until you have to. So I think five years brings us back and uh, brings all parties back necessarily to have that discussion. Should we need to or should the dynamics, um, dictate us to change those terms? So that's why I would love to see if we can just go a five year. And then, uh, if we want to do it another five, great. Want to go thirty from that point? Great. Transfer, great, whatever. But let's do five would be my suggestion.
Thank you, Matt. I see Erin, then Nicole, Mark, and then I'll call myself.
Right, yeah. So I, I'm going down the, the leasing route, uh, just to, I think it's the, the least complicated right now as the district is just getting started. This, I think the, the clawback provisions would be important, but also maybe a little challenging to negotiate. Um, but I, I think it's, you know, I think it preserves, of course, this is not a final, final decision, um, future trustees and councils could decide to convey later on. If that seems like a better approach at that point. So the, the question on the lease term is one, I'd actually like to turn to, um, Johnny Teeter. John, if you don't mind speaking up, I'm because I'm, here I want to pick a term that gives the library the most flexibility and most chance for success. And so I wanted to see, Johnny, if you know whether the trustees, yourself and the trustees have an opinion on whether a shorter or a longer lease term would be more beneficial as the district gets started.
Um, sure. Thanks for, um, asking me that. Um, I think our sense is a longer term lease would be beneficial. Although I think the notion of revisiting it in a few years, um, makes sense. Um, the biggest concern for the trustees will be that we at some point elect a council that decides they don't want to renew a lease and that really impacts our ability to do long range planning. Um, so you know, if you want to do a lease as long as you feel comfortable doing and revisit it in a few years to see if you want to change it, I think that would be acceptable, but I think we'd be very concerned about a five year lease.
That, that's very helpful, Johnny. So then, um, Matt, I appreciate your point. It was, it was a good one. But hearing that, I, I would go, uh, towards that longer lease, uh, for the request there and with an inclusion of a, hey, let's check back in with a council and trustees in a few years, maybe at that three year point, or maybe it's the five year point. I'm not sure exactly when, uh, but to, to make sure that the relationship is going well and whether we want to make any changes.
Thank you, Erin. Uh, Nicole?
Thanks. I just have a few, few questions and, um, thank you, Erin. That was one of mine. Um, the, I like the idea of a longer lease with a check in, um, for exactly the reasons that Johnny mentioned. It just, that seems incredibly stressful for a new library district, um, to not have that, uh, security of a longer, longer lease. Um, but I do like the idea of a check in. Uh, my question is maybe a question for, um, Kim or possibly you, Johnny. How have other library districts, uh, done this? And, and I guess maybe the, the bigger question is have any library districts failed? I think that seems to be one of the concerns and, and, um, thinking about these buildings is if the library district goes under and the library has the buildings, then, um, we've lost kind of our buildings and our library. I was just wondering looking at the other fifty or so districts that have done this, what was the? Did that happen to anybody?
Um, this is Kim Seder. Um, we have done most of the library district formations in the state and none of them have failed. Um, they've all been very strong. A couple of them are small, you know, and haven't had the kind of growth that we've seen in the ones in the front range. Um, and in terms of the buildings, there aren't a lot that have come out of another entity like a city or a county. But the ones that have, have all taken conveyances of the building. Uh, Fort Collins was all conveyance. Um, the Anything Libraries in Adams County were conveyed with a right, right of reversion. And there were seven branches and now there's only one branch left, but there's nine brand new libraries. So what happened was that right of reverter was waived and the buildings were sold at some point in use. But, um, we haven't had any that have come out of other entities and not been conveyed the buildings.
Thank you. Um, and then the other question that I have, I think this one may be for you, Cara. I'm just going to jump around a little bit to different people. Um, how do these different options fit within our facility strategic plan? I'm just, I'm thinking about, you know, we just decided to try to sell nine buildings so that we can fund some of the maintenance with some of the remaining buildings. And so I'm just kind of wondering where, where this fits in and, um, the maintenance costs and, and just our overall commitment to, um, our facilities.
Thank you, Cara Skinner, Chief Financial Officer. And I see Joanna Krian has popped up too. So I don't know if you want to jump, but I would just say that, um, certainly the facilities master plan, uh, one of the major objectives is to consolidate and reduce long-term liability associated with buildings and to to reduce our, um, potential risk. So, um, that is certainly the case and, and, uh, if we were to lease them, certainly we would want the lease to contain provisions that provides that we don't have any liability associated with the buildings, um, when the library is leasing them. So, Joanne, I don't know if you want to add to that.
All right. Sorry, nothing additional other than you're right in terms of our strategic planning and, and we've given that council and the community have lots of different priorities, we're always challenged as we've talked with council before about maintaining our facilities well. Um, and so it, it continues to be that challenge with having more buildings to maintain.
Thank you. Um, and then one last question, I'm just thinking about natural disasters, flood, fire, that sort of thing. I mean, what happens if something wipes out all the buildings and we are the landlords?
Well, I believe that the, you know, the, those issues would need to be worked out in the lease in terms of how the properties are insured, who's going to take on the responsibility for those, um. I, you know, I think at this point, our anticipation would be, um, that that would be with the library district, but of course, you know, when you get into natural disasters and a lot of that kind of stuff too, I am guessing that, um, tho- those would be the time, and we would probably re- revisit a lot of this, but I think those would be the times, you know, that when they're rebuilding, that they would probably be looking for those longer term commitments because of the, the amount of investment involved.
Thank, thank you. Um, yeah, for me, I think it, it really just fits more with where we're trying to go financially, um, with our facilities plan, uh, as well as with our, I agree with the staff goal of wanting to set the library district up for success. Um, and for me, a part of that is them being able to control, uh, their, their buildings, um, to be able to, um, kind of get some money through the building should they need to, as we've done many, many times in the past, um, not necessarily by selling, uh, but even, even just kind of using that as, um, a source of, um, just kind of, uh, of not revenue, not income. Sorry, my brain is blinking tonight. Um, it's just a source of money that they can pull from should they need to, um, without destroying the building or selling it or anything like that. So, um, I, I really, I, I think that in line with setting the district up for success, I think it would be really good. But, um, if, if we can't do that, then I think revisiting this in five years or so, um, would be a good idea and giving the library just like the longer term lease, um, that they need with the, um, understanding that the library district can take care of maintaining their buildings as they need to and not have to wait for us to, um, to help with anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole, Mark. Um, then I'm going to call myself. Then I see Rachel and Bob.
Yeah, just further to, to David's comment, that's why, um, uh, ensuring these buildings to their full replacement value will be uh, very important so that if in the event there is some form of, uh, calamity, there will be money for replacement. As far as term goes, um, if the library district would prefer a longer term, I'm, uh, prepared to accommodate that. Um, if, if that gives them greater security and, and comfort in terms of getting their operations in order, um, parties to a lease can revisit any term of that lease at any time they desire. So if we want to check in in three years or five years or seven years, um, it's not going to be our decision. It'll be a conversation between a subsequent council and the district. And those parties are free to do that. So, um, you know, all that we're sitting in stone is, is a term for the library district. And, uh, if they want the longer term, I'm happy to provide that for them.
Thank you, Mark. Um, let's see, I I like Matt's idea of revisiting. I would like to see that um, at a sh- shorter time period aligning with sort of the three years that we talked about for the um, trustee appointments makes sense to me. I do just want to bring up, being on the being the representative to the board of the Dairies, you know, that we've been working on the last eighteen months to renegotiate the lease with the city. And, you know, there the complications around because you can only lease for twenty or potentially thirty years. You have to look at things like what would happen if the lease is not renewed. Um, and the complications arising from the amount of money that things, that entities like the board uh, like that the library district would need to put into the building and what would happen at lease termination and how they're made whole, um, are complicated and contentious issues. I think that um, you know, I'm sure we all probably correctly assume that this would lease would just be renewed, um, every, whenever it came up for renewal, but that, you know, the district can't necessarily rely on that in their long-term planning like Joni mentioned. Um, I also just want to point out that the main is in, you know, one of our most dangerous flood zones in the state. And so the likelihood of having to deal with that kind of issue, um, flood related and, um, the complications that might arise from that is very real for that building. Um, so just something that we need to make sure is planned for well in a lease negotiation, but I also think would be easier and more straightforward through con- through conveyance. That's, that's all I have for the moment. Uh, Rachel, you're up next.
Thank you, Lauren. Um, okay. So just wrote down a couple of thoughts. I'm i- in favor of the lease for all, as you saw in my straw poll. So yeah, I think it's, it's important that I have my, um, lens be as a steward for the city of Boulder's, uh, fiscal soundness. I have no doubt that the library will succeed. I don't think they need to prove themselves within the next three to five years. That's not what I would be looking for. Uh, at any kind of a check in with the district. So I don't, I don't want that to be, um, confused on, like, I'm kind of waiting for them to prove themselves. I've, they're, they have a really good, uh, tax stream coming and it's, and it's going to be a solidly run library. So I have no concerns there. I, I do think though, that we as a city strategically put libraries to be community spaces in our city and the library district is going to have a district wide lens. And so my fear would be that fifty or a hundred years from now, when libraries are different, you know, setups and we have no, none of us can predict what that's going to look like. That, uh, it might make more sense to have one more in the county and shut down the Reynolds branch or whatever. And so I, I would just like to keep those spaces that were purchased to be centers that people, uh, can go to in their neighborhoods remain available for City of Boulder. And I don't see any way if we transfer the land to, to be sure that that maintains. So with my, you know, City of Boulder lens, I don't see how we could, uh, transfer and, and be uh, accountable to knowing that, that the places that we got to ensure. And, and some of that is in, in disaster times, like if, if there's a a fire or a flood or it's freezing outside, libraries are often places that you go and they need to be in neighborhoods. And so as a city, I just would not want to forfeit that under any circumstance. So if I run council in three to five years, I'd still be like, lease is good. Um, but I, I would do a thirty year lease to make sure that the, the library can do what they need to with buildings and count on that. Um, so I'd, I'd max out that length. And then would just also point out as somebody who like, I will never get the months back that I spent in CU South negotiations with the City of Boulder uh, hat on. Um, I think people were worried that I was so, um, friendly towards CU South being used for flood mitigation purposes that I wouldn't advocate hard for what the city needed. And I think it is incumbent on us to advocate for the city and our positions. And so that's what I think we're doing with a lease rather than a sale. And it would be very I think unusual for a city just to be like, here's thirty million dollars in buildings, nothing back. Like that would, that would have fallen flat in the CU South situation. We would have gotten in some big trouble. So, uh, I, you know, I don't think, I don't think we do it for BBSD or CU or RTD or any, anybody else. So, um, I, I just, this doesn't have anything to do with how I feel about the success of the library district. It's just sort of what I believe my role is. And I think the role is we, we keep the buildings and we lease them for a penny or whatever it looks like. And we do it for the max time. And I think the district will um, flourish. Thanks.
Thanks, Rachel, Bob, and then Junie.
Um, I wanted to throw out as a, as a former real estate lawyer myself, I wanted to throw out a suggestion that maybe is a hybrid between uh, Johnny's excellent point and, and, and the good suggestion that Matt, Matt made. Um, and that is we do something like this. Have, have a long-term lease, twenty years or thirty years. Johnny, you can tell us what, what your trustees want. Have a long-term lease. However, um, give the, the district and only the district, not the city, give the district the option to terminate the lease at five-year intervals. Um, that way, if there, if the district wants to prompt a discussion with the city, you'd get our attention by giving us a notice of non-renewal. And you could do that with respect to any one or all of the libraries. I wouldn't force the district into making a decision, all or nothing. They may decide that there's, um, a change in circumstances on Reynolds or on Carnegie or North. Um, and so the district would have four different options to, um, and it'd be solely the district's option. Exercise at your five, at five-year intervals to, um, to, to terminate the lease. I suspect the district won't want to terminate the lease, but, but certainly would be a vehicle by which the district could call the matter to the attention of the city and perhaps a future council would be willing to convey some or all of the properties to the, um, district. And so it gives the district, I think, Johnny, the best of both worlds in that you have the security of tenure that I think you and your, your colleagues are looking for twenty years or thirty years. But also, um, an ability to bring the city to the table, um, at five-year intervals. And, and I think, uh, Lauren made a good point about sometimes leases take long times to, to renegotiate. And so what I would also suggest, David, is maybe at fi- five-year intervals where the, where the trustees could terminate the lease or, or at least indicate they, they would, if we're interested in non-renewal, but maybe have a one-year lead time on that. That way the, the, the parties, the trustees and the city council, whoever's on that, those bodies that, that point in time would have plenty of time to have discussion in between the year four mark and year five mark and do that rolling forward. I'm throwing that out. I, I don't have strong feelings about this one way or the other, but I'm hearing what Johnny said. I'm hearing what, what Matt said, and I'm, I'm just trying to find a, a, a way that, um, we can get the best of both worlds.
Thank you, Bob. Junie?
Thank you, Lauren. I would certainly support what I just heard because that's, uh, along the line that I was thinking as well. And I think having Johnny decide or help us figure out whether twenty or thirty years, uh, is the one she would go with. And then um, given the district that option, five years option, I think that's a great idea as well. So um, that I'm just repeating again what I just heard earlier. I think it's a, it's a great idea and I would support that.
Thanks, Junie. So I'm hearing a lot of support for a long-term lease with um, a shorter term review or, um, period either three or five years where it would be where the district would have the option to exit the lease. Um, or the city could review it and make a different decision about the, um, nature of. Make a different decision about the um nature of the of ownership. Is there anything that I'm missing? Does that staff feel like they have clear direction?
I I have one just parting remark.
Yes.
If this is the appropriate time.
Is it a remark, David, or a question? Because I just I I'd like some clarity on. I think you're right, Lauren, on what I heard too, a longer-term lease and uh somehow putting in that five-year interval. Um I appreciate the suggestion, Bob. I heard Junie supported. If we could get a show of hand so that we know that council supports that direction.
Are those questions Nicole and Aaron?
Yeah, I just, I I was just wondering um if we could hear from Johnny about that as well. I'm just I'm curious. What the trustees' thoughts may be.
Absolutely. Johnny?
Yeah, well, I'm really not authorized um to speak on behalf of the um trustees. Um I mean, speaking for myself personally, I mean, I I know that the trustees would prefer a longer lease, so. Um thirty years would be great. Um I think that um. The biggest concern we have is that a future city council could basically terminate at will. So a notion that we have um thirty years but have the option to ask the city to revisit it, our. Option to me sounds appealing again. The the board would have to um discuss that. Um so I can certainly take that back to them and consider that. Um the only other thing I would say is that. You the other complication in the lease from our perspective is. The the cost to fix these buildings based on the facility study that we just did. Um comes in at nine to eleven million dollars over the next ten years. Um that's considerably more than was projected earlier, and so we're trying to figure out how to do that. We have a good plan for how to do that now. We hired a consultant um going forward, and I think it's important that. The Board of Trustees have the right to decide what improvements are made when. And how much money goes into those. So I was a little bit concerned by the comment earlier that. A lease allows the city to control what we do with the buildings um around. Capital maintenance. I think if the cost is on the district, the district really needs to have the ability to make those decisions. And I think the library law supports that because the trustees are the only ones. Who are authorized to decide how to spend money, so that's something we'd have to work out in the in the terms of lease. Um but I just wanted to raise that as well.
Thank you, Johnny. Uh Erin, and then I see Dave. David, were you took and respond to something that was just said?
Um yeah, well, I guess the only thing that I would just like to add is that when you're talking about, and I. I assume that this is implied in your conversation, but as we take these conversations, the next step on. Twenty years, twenty-five years, thirty years in terms of lease terms. That part of the conversations that we will be having with the district is whether or not they can meet the standards for higher um lease terms.
Yes, thank you. Erin?
So just to put a slightly finer point on the the five-year termination option for the district, I'd say maybe when you straw pull it, I might ask that we. Uh phrase it as that we put it on the table as an offer if it is of interest to the district, right? So not that it would be a requirement, but that we would offer the option and then that could be part of the discussion negotiations.
That sounds great. Thank you. Mark?
Well, first, I I need to ask Karen, I'm I'm not quite sure what you just suggested, so I'd like if you could make it a little clearer.
So that if a majority of council agrees uh to is that we would take Bob's idea of. Offering a five-year terminate a termination off an option every five years, that we would offer that to the district. Um to the trustees, that say if they're interested in including that in the lease, that we are open to it, but it's only if they're interested in it.
Okay, yeah, I'm 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 a little less comfortable with having a long-term lease with options to terminate every. Every five years it's done, but um uh I'm I'm. I'm just a little uncomfortable with that, and with respect to the um the maintenance costs that Johnny identified. If you're talking about nine million dollars over ten years, um I still think that the city could be a lender. Um to the district, um at some sort of uh obviously pre-negotiated interest rate. Um up to a maximum per year and just provide a facility. For them to borrow since they're not going to be doing certificates of participation. And they're not going to be selling the buildings for the purpose of of renovating them, uh other buildings. Um uh I I think we could probably find a way to do that if if that were of interest to the district and to my colleagues.
Can I call it?
Um sure, I also saw Teresa pop up for a second. I don't know if. What were if you had something you wanted to add to the conversation we're having right now.
I I do, and it's, you know, we're we're trying to thread a very fine needle here, I think, in getting direction from council. Without getting into um all of the details of what we can go forth and negotiate. Because we don't know the universe of possibilities that the library district will bring to the table, and so I think having the. Having some direction about the um sort of outer bounds of our authority is helpful. I think getting into the the very detailed and nuanced conversation um. Might prove difficult for us as we try to approach these negotiations. So just a just a thought.
I I'm sensitive to that. Teresa, um I was simply throwing out a concept uh that can be fleshed out or not uh as the parties get into a room. I wasn't looking for not a five or a vote of any of any kind on that.
Thanks, Mark. Um Junie, did you still want to colloquy on that?
I just want to clarify, and I think Bob's hands is also raised, and that could be part of the clarification. That my understanding and what I would support Bob on, that the option would be for the district. The option of five years would be for the district um uh to be able to bring the city to the table. Uh for possible termination, so it would not be an option for the city itself. The city would not be able to bring that conversation. But it would only be the district, so Bob can add further to that, but I just wanted to clarify that part.
Yeah, I believe that's what we're discussing. Thank you for that clarification. Um Mark, did you have anything else?
Uh no, other than, you know, my my concern about that is it seems a little coercive, uh you know, parties if they are. Willing to revise a lease, can revise a lease at will. Um the the thought that the library district will come to us and say. Uh we want to change the terms of the lease or we're going to stop operating the library district. Um is is sort of unappealing to me. Um uh others may have a greater comfort level with that, but that's. That's not the kind of uh relationship I'm I'm hoping to establish between the parties. And that's. That's my comment on that.
Can I call colloquy on that, Lauren?
Sure, and I I also see Joni um put up her hand, and I assume that that is also related to the topic.
I can I can wait, Johnny, if you want to go first.
Sure, I was I was just going to say the library district is required by law to operate the library system. So there's no way the library could come back to the city and say, do this with our leases, or we're going to shut down the library. I mean, that that's just not. That's not conceivable.
Thank you, Nicole. Oh, you're on mute.
Thank you. Sorry, I thought I had muted. I was just going to remind us that we also. Um just said we're still going to have a hand in appointing the library district trustees, so I just don't, maybe this is too much faith in future councils. Um but I I really don't think future councils are going to be in a situation where they are um choosing folks who are not going to do a good job of. Um upholding the library district and and working in its best interest, so I just got some faith in us, and I think we appointed a really great board this time. Um and I I expect us to do that again in the future. Thanks.
Rachel and then Bob.
Yeah, so I just to clarify, I think what we're talking about, what Bob has suggested, is that if there were, say, a situation where. The library district didn't want to continue leasing, like maybe they just don't like that spot anymore and want to have one somewhere else, or there's some. Branch that's terribly underperforming. I don't know what would cause a library to not want a certain branch open, but they might not want to. Uh renew a lease, and I assume this would be individually applied, so like they might want to continue leasing the main, but they don't want to continue the Reynolds. So that should be part of it, is giving the library the option to discontinue any leases, and that doesn't frighten me at all because. You know, half of my concern with wanting to do a lease rather than transfer is just the value of land in Boulder and and how hard it is to get. You know, large, large enough plots um to have as as um. Community centers, so if the library says we don't want to do it and we take it back to the city, I do understand we have a facilities. Uh master plan and vision where we're we're reconfiguring some of that, but the libraries are in um pretty. Awesome locations where I can't imagine the city doesn't want that valuable land back, so. If the library is, if it if these buildings are not useful to the library at five-year intervals, I I think we absolutely should give them. That off-ramp, kind of similar to what Excel gave the city in the union negotiations, like if, you know, we'd. We can um reevaluate as appropriate, so I think that's great. I don't think I would require, though, like a a meeting of the minds every certain. Number of years on the leases, because that just seems like a possible waste of city and district staff and. Uh leadership time, so if the library wants out, great, they will bring us that conversation. From the city side, we're saying you can rely on a thirty-year lease, so. Uh move forward comfortably with that, so just have the off-ramp for the library, and then um a- as as Mark just said. Anybody can come to the other party at any time and say, is this, what what do you think of this idea? So that. That's not off the table. I just wouldn't compel future councils to spend their time checking in or future library district um leaders. It's. There's always a lot on every agenda. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you, Rachel. Bob?
Wanted to make it, uh and I think we've kind of beaten that one up up previously, so I was gonna make a. A new suggestion on a kind of slightly new topic. Um I I was hearing what Teresa said about us getting kind of into the weeds here, and also um. Something that Rachel said triggered in my mind a a a remembrance of of the fact that. But two council members were appointed by council to to work on the C U South um arrangement, two members of council were were appointed by council. To work on the Excel energy settlement, um and I'm wondering, and there's a lot of details here that we're not giving to staff and David, and. I don't think we need to take time tonight to get into the weeds on that, but I'm sure there's going to be a hundred questions asked. I'm wondering if if council would be willing to appoint. Two members of council to work side by side with staff. I know I know that the the district trustees are going to be. Uh side by side with Kim uh from on their side of the table. I I feel like maybe there's there's no council members um side by side with um. Our city staff. I think we had a little bit of a miss, quite frankly, um on the staff's recommendations, and then it's not staff's fault. They just didn't know where council was. They they do now. Um and I'm just wondering if council would be interested and willing to appoint two council members, to be very, very, very clear about this. Those council members would not be authorized to make any decisions whatsoever. They'd simply be a sounding board for staff, and and it would be their responsibility, quite frankly, to go back to their council colleagues and check in on from time to time on on various points. But that way, at least staff would have some um some, a couple of council members, and and it'd be good if they were somewhat diverse on on these points. To to check in with, um I know if if they're appointed as a committee, there's public notice requirements. Quite frankly, I don't. I don't really care if these negotiations are done in the public. They shouldn't be done in the public as far as I'm concerned. Um but um but I'm I'm just throwing that out there. I'm not volunteering to be one of those two people, by the way. Um but but I I think that maybe, and I don't know how long these negotiations will take, and and perhaps we should make sure to appoint uh two people that we know that will be on the next council, just in case. It's supposed to be on November, but um I'm just throwing that out. There's a suggestion, because otherwise we're going to have staff coming back to us every. Few weeks going, okay, here's six new issues, here's four new issues, here's three new issues, but they have a couple of council members they can rely on, and and hopefully those council members are going to faithfully. Communicate with their colleagues that might just make staff's job easier, and ultimately we can bring a product back, all of council that um. Yeah, the staff has some confidence that probably uh will garner um council's support, so I'm just throwing that out there.
It looks like David is ready to provide some thoughts on that potentially.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Um so uh Bob is correct, if you're if you if you do it in the committee model. Everything, all all meetings would be required to be noticed and open to the public. I just wanted to make it just a kind of a very slight clarification. In terms of the Excel negotiations. And um the C U South, tho- they those were not council committees. Um in those instances, the staff actually reached out to a couple of council members and requested that they help us. Um and so they, we did not consider those committees. Um so I I just put that out there as just kind of a a clarification and. Um a a committee's not the only way of do of getting to what Bob's objective is.
Yeah, and that's what I, thanks for that clarification, David. That's that what I was suggesting is the C U South and Excel model, that they're not appointed as a committee. There there's people, two council members um that um staff knows they can go to and and check in with. Uh ultimately, the decision's going to be all of council, so um uh I I'm a little agnostic about whether it's appointed committee, as you say, it would be open to the public. Um if folks would rather just have um have staff reach out to to a couple of council members, that's fine too, if any of the way, but I'm just wondering if that would be helpful, because. I think um uh we 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 may have had a little bump in the road here on on this question that that could have been avoided, and. I suspect there'll be lots of other questions from staff that they might want to reach out to some council members. Obviously, staff can reach out to any council member they want. At any point in time, they can pull all nine of us behind the scenes if they want to, but but um maybe if there's a couple of council members, they they know that they can go to, that. Would be helpful. I I I think council found it very, very helpful with both the Excel negotiations and the C S out negotiations to have. A couple uh council members with diverse uh opinions that they could go to and and hope that 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 was more or less representative of that entire body of council.
Thanks, Bob. I have a question related to that, which for legal team, um. Could we appoint two members to council of council to something other than a committee? What and what would we call that? Um or does it have to be that they would be um tapped by staff in order to?
Yeah, well, so um you know, the the people debate what the um definition of committee is, but. I have typically viewed it as it's a subset of the the entire body. And they have been delegated a task to do. Um so anytime you ask your fellow board members in groups of more than one to do something. Um I think that most likely a court would consider that a a committee. Um and you, I I know you guys are all aware of the charter requirement, but it, you know, it says something along the lines of. You know, all meetings of the commounds, council and committees thereof shall be public.
Thank you, David. Okay, keeping that in mind and kind of trying to aim towards wrapping this conversation up, let's. Get through these last hands I see up. Chris, then I got Nicole, Joni and Junie.
Yeah, I just wanted to uh reply to Bob's uh idea, and. Um I think there are situations where in a in a complex intergovernmental agreement situation or negotiation where. Um having the perspective of various council members is sometimes very helpful. I think in this situation. Um and and obviously, I don't want to speak to what I anticipate it to be, but I think. The two issues that we brought before council tonight are really the two key policy issues that we had a question on. Um I anticipate us bringing the full I G A back to council. Um to give direction to the city manager on whether to sign the I G A or not in the next thirty days. So we're pretty close to the finish line here. Um and I think we are uh uh there isn't a lot more work to go. So what I might suggest, if if council is open to it, is um let's leave that as an option on the table if we need it, if things start to. Go in a not-so-great direction, but at this point, I anticipate that we're pretty pretty close to the finish line, if that context is helpful.
Thank you, Chris. That is Nicole.
Yes, I'm just going to echo. My my sense is the same as Chris's, so I'm glad glad to know um from staff who are really involved. Um the process is working. It feels like we resolved a couple of the really big and outstanding issues tonight. Um we have a lot of other things on our plates that we are trying to work toward as we wrap up. Um these last couple of months of this council, so um I think given that we're so close, um these these are the big issues we've hashed out. We're resolving them tonight. I don't know that we need any more involvement beyond this, other than waiting for um the the agreement to come back.
Thanks, Nicole. Joni?
Yeah, and I would echo Chris's comment. Um I think we're very close. There have not frankly been a lot of issues between us, and of course, most of what we're doing is so far down in the weeds. You know, when will staff be terminated and how will that process work? Um but the other thing I wanted to mention, just to avoid future con- um confusion, there are two I G As. there are two IGAs currently under negotiation. We're talking about the IGA between the city and the library district, which has to do with transitioning the assets from one organization to the other. There is also a three-party IGA under negotiation. That's with the city, the county and the district. And the appointment process that you're talking about tonight is in the three-party IGA. So when the two-party IGA, IGA, the one Chris referred to comes back to you within 30 days, you won't see the appointment process in there. Everything that the county has a piece of is in the other agreement and that will be trailing. So I just wanted to make sure you guys knew that. So there wasn't confusion when that came up.
I appreciate that clarification. Thank you. Rachel?
Just a real quick suggestion as someone who's, you know, it's not my problem in 10 more meetings. But I, I agree with what Chris Messcheck said. And, and it does seem like this is only relevant in a, like really big negotiation situation, which I think the lead up to this probably was kind of a big and maybe could have used some, some earlier check-ins with council. Cause I, I, it's as somebody who was on council during muni and then was invited by staff to, to just sort of be in some of the rooms during C South negotiations, the, the benefit of that, I think, is that council members can take information back out to council and just do, you know, sort of some pulse checks on like, you know, is, is staff negotiating in a way that the majority is likely to, I don't know, agree with or whatever the, the situation is. So I would say that didn't really happen in this situation. So it just might be helpful going forward. If there are sensitive things coming up that maybe staff is sure to check in early and, you know, do to however you want to check in, just to make sure that you have a good sense of, is this the direction that council is wanting to go? So I feel like maybe we didn't do that well this time. And that I, I think that the majority of council was not, as it turned out, interested in, in gifting the, the assets of the building. So maybe just making sure that without council members being aware that, that staff isn't going to all council and, and presenting anything that might be sensitive, just so that, you know, staff's not blindsided and, and the IGA doesn't get delayed by council not agreeing with whatever has happened in those rooms.
And I, this has been a very helpful discussion in the last couple of minutes. I'll withdraw my suggestion. I did not realize that we were as far along as we were on the, the one IGA that, that Johnny referenced. So if we're only 30 days away and all the big issues are, are resolved, then, then I don't think there is necessary for, for council members to be, be designated or otherwise. I, I would see if there's a big.
I agree, Bob. And that was definitely the direction I was going to go.
Yeah, yeah, no, I wouldn't struggle. I withdraw my suggestion. I'm, I'm happy to hear that we're, we're only 30 days away from this one. And I look forward to the IGA coming back to us in, in mid-October.
All right. So next we have straw polling of the option to, to offer the option to the district to lease, that's sorry. Having a long-term lease of 20 or 30 years, depending on whether the district can meet the, the requirements of the 30 years. But allowing them the option of termination at their will at five-year increments. I see hands in favor of that. It, it's what you clarified earlier, Junie. I see eight. Am I missing one? I think it's, I think there's nine. Oh, Mark, nope. Okay. I see eight hands. Great. Thank you. And as Bob said, I don't think we need to straw poll on that other option that he brought up. Unless anyone has any additional comments or concerns, I would love to move us on to the next agenda item. Great. Thank you.
We got really clear direction. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Great work.
All right. So next on our agenda, we have the 2024 recommended budget discussion. Nuriya, am I kicking that over to you first?
You are. Thank you, council member. As you know, the responsibility for deciding how to spend taxpayer money is one of the biggest that we have together. Tonight, we appreciate the opportunity to present our 2024 recommended budget and look forward to answering your questions. And know that we'll continue to have opportunities to hear more from you as we have two more touchpoints with council in October that include hearing from the community and ultimately taking a vote. As I know you're aware, staff is almost continuously working on its budget. And our phenomenal budget team has led a robust process with both departments and council's financial strategies committee. I've been particularly impressed with the many ways this budget team has built organizational capacity, especially around outcome-based budgeting. And I'm grateful for the thoughtfulness and collaboration that has gone into this proposal from across the enterprise. What you see before you is a budget that honors our pre-existing commitments, including many of the priorities that you as council establish for us. And it's a budget that continues to orient itself around our existing said framework, sustainability, equity and resilience. As we continue the hard work of strategic alignment and inserting outcome-based measurements to help guide our, our future financial decisions. Specifically, this 514.8 million dollar budget seeks to provide the necessary funding to address the most pressing challenges we have as a community. Behavioral health issues, homelessness and unsanctioned camping, ongoing financial stressors for vulnerable populations, climate change and wildfire risk, and a lack of affordable housing. It also strives to support the core functions of local government to address key capital needs and commitments and to recognize and retain our amazingly talented workforce. We believe this spending plan truly serves community and that's, there's a lot to celebrate about that. There is also, however, an important word to keep in mind as we think about this budget. And by now I am sure most of you can say it with me, constrained. Our budget is finite, even when our hopes and dreams are not. This is particularly true this year, as you'll hear, as you'll hear later in our presentation. For reasons we have discussed already, and we will continue to explore in the future, this is not, this is not the year for lots of new things. I ask you to keep the stewardship in mind as you listen to the presentation and ask your questions. I am profoundly grateful to all our staff, particularly our extraordinary CFO, our budget officer, and the entire budget team who helped shape and propose our 2024 recommended budget. I'm also grateful for the many hours your colleagues on the financial strategies committee spent with us to share their guidance as this budget was being crafted. And finally, I want to acknowledge and appreciate our department leadership and those teams who really helped prioritize needs as we made hard decisions about how to resource the many needs we have across the city. And with that, I'll turn over the mic to our CFO, Cara Skinner.
Thank you, Nuriya. Good evening, Mayor Brackett, Mayor Pro Tem Malak and members of council, Cara Skinner, Chief Financial Officer. I do want to say just a few brief words. I appreciate all that Nuriya shared, but do want to myself offer some appreciation. And then Mark Wolf, our budget officer and his team will provide the community and you really with an overview and highlights of the recommended 2024 budget. And I just want to share this perspective that the annual budget does provide spending authority for specific funds and purposes, but we really consider it an incredibly important strategic and operational plan and a communication tool with the community, because it really does detail how the city plans to use taxpayer dollars and other revenue sources to deliver programs and services. So I too want to share my thanks to Mark for his leadership and strategic vision and to the team's really incredible work, problem-solving focus and really partnership with leaders and team members across the organization. And with that, also a truly huge kudos and thanks to so many and all the city departments. As this budget really is the product of many months of digging in to community needs, service delivery options, desired outcomes, resourcing options and proposals, collaboration across teams, various prioritization exercises and tough trade-off conversations, and then ultimately funding recommendations. We're also so thankful to our community connectors and residents and their time and incredibly valuable engagement input into this year's budget. And thrilled to have two of them joining us tonight to share their thoughts with the community and you. Also want to share my thanks to the financial strategy committee. It's been really, I think, so vitally helpful to us as a budget team to, to have their consult and collaboration on all financial issues. So we are excited to get to this point each year, really to culminate and share our work in the recommended budget. And with that, without further ado, I'll hand it over to Mark Wolf.
Thank you, Cara. Let me get everything situated here. Okay. Does everything look okay on your end? Having some issues on our employee town hall the other night. Good evening. I'm Mark Wolf, Budget Officer. We're glad to be with you this evening to discuss the 2024 recommended budget. I'm joined this evening by our budget team, Charlotte Husky, Sarah Hancock and Raphael Tingley, who you will hear from during this presentation a little bit later. Additionally, as Cara mentioned, we are excited to have Ryan Hanchin from the city team and two of our community connectors and residents, Jamal Gilmore and Monora Cooper with us as well. They will be sharing a part of the presentation a little bit later, all of which will introduce themselves as we get to them in the presentation. So we have several things to discuss this evening. I, I never thought the budget would be the lighter of the two discussions in the evening. We have nine things to get through tonight. They will, we'll get through them as fast as possible. Want to give you and community a, a nice comprehensive overview of the 2024 budget. This year, we will not spend as much time on our financial conditions, given the relative stability compared to the last few years. However, there are a couple of revenue considerations to point out. Beginning with our most significant source of revenue, sales and use tax. I'll note that we continue and value our partnership with the CU Lead School of Business to provide sales and use tax projections. Our total sales and use tax rate is 3.86. That includes the, the point one five that we will talk about in a little bit more detail. That expires at the end of 2024. Now, as I mentioned, sales and use tax is significant. When excluding utilities, it is about half of all of our revenues. And then we have our, our table here that demonstrates where sales and use tax is distributed. And again, a little over half, about 53% is dedicated to those purposes listed. Sales and use tax projections, we've heard a lot, certainly nationally, about the overall stability of the economy. That is good news. There are local factors that we would consider to be headwinds that at least provide some caution. Inflation is slowing across major categories. That is well advertised. We saw the, the good side, if you will, from a revenue standpoint with inflation over the last 18 months. As that slows, so does that inflation impact in our sales and use tax. We are seeing a national slowdown in retail sales. We're seeing that locally as well. As some of our local sales tax categories have, have turned even negative year over year. So something we're watching very closely. And based on some of those categories, those local categories, CU's model compared to last year. So our most recent model in July is what we use to develop this budget. When you compare that to the model we received in 2022, those projections for our budget year 2024 are down 2.3% or 2.7 across all funds, 2.7 million across all funds. So again, we watch sales and use tax very closely because it is such a, a big deal from a revenue standpoint. It's a good place to acknowledge the quote prime effect. We are following the reports on increased economic activity. And at least from a budget standpoint, we're excited about the prospect of, of that effect having on, on revenues. As council knows, we typically have a couple of month lag, about two month lag before receiving final revenue information. And we'll report out to council and community on, once we have an apples to apples comparison on, on perhaps the prime effect in this, in the fall season. Moving over to property tax, again, something of interest to many community members. Property taxes make up a quarter of our general fund revenues. 2023 assessments, as we well know, went up significantly, property values up about 32%. We did receive what is close to final numbers from the county. So it'll be, it looks like a little lower than 32% across the city. There is a ballot initiative that is on the ballot in November called Proposition HH, which would reduce the, the local revenue growth in property tax to 28%, so about a 4% difference. I do want to note here that we always try to budget conservatively. We have budgeted at that 28% amount. So if voters were to pass Proposition HH, there is no budget impact for 2024. So, so that's good. And if HH is rejected by voters, there would be an incremental difference in revenue. That's about 1.5 million in the general fund. We are monitoring a possible 4% cap on annual revenue, a, a ballot initiative that would cap 4% annual revenue in property tax that could be on the ballot in 2024. So something we are, are watching and another reason for caution as we think ahead to 2025, 26, a property tax collections. All right. Other revenue considerations. Here we have a chart of our 2024 general fund sources. Again, sales and use tax is a big part of that. Normally that's a bigger percentage. One of the categories you'll see a little bit larger percentage than in past years is this other revenues in the general fund. That is because we're anticipating a $13 million repayment from the, from the Boulder Library District. The very on-brand for this evening, that timing and the amount of that payment is something that will be ultimately solved with the, with the IGA. But those revenues are anticipated in 2024 and programmed for one-time uses. I'll also mention that sales and use tax in 24 includes the expiring point one five general fund sales and use tax. Our projections going out assume that, that will expire at the end of 2024, pending voter consideration of the ballot initiative in November. Council has seen this chart before. These are some of the other commitments that we've made. Nuriya mentioned at the outset that we are excited about the investments that we've been able to sustain in the 2024 budget. That includes the day services center. We have $10 million of capital programmed in 2024 and $1.6 million in operating. So we needed that 1.6 in new ongoing operating dollars in order to sustain that program in 24. The behavioral health or care program, this is the non-law enforcement response program. That program is in the process of getting up and running, has come in a little bit higher than we were projecting this time last year. So the new ongoing operating budget for, needed in 24 and programmed in the recommended budget is 1.7. And then as we've outlined for Alpine Balsam is thinking ahead to potential debt service or partnership opportunities to make that project happen. We have programmed an additional two and a half million dollars for 2025 to bring our total either debt or partnership amount to 6.1. So those resources are, are within the 2024 budget and impact where we were able to make other investments. Another part of our budget process was to really look, especially given the general fund constraints, look across other sources of funds. And to describe a little bit more of our process, I'm handing it off to Sarah Hancock.
Thank you, Mark, and good evening, council. My name is Sarah Hancock. I'm a principal budget analyst with Central Budget and excited to be here this evening. So as a key component of our budget process this year, our team completed a dedicated funding analysis. And that was to better understand the city's funding sources and their intended uses. About 65 to 70% of the city's revenues are dedicated or restricted to some specific purpose. So understanding them more in-depth offered us a significant opportunity and more flexibility in this budget process and beyond. This analysis did include exploration of voter approval ballot language, municipal code, any management policies that were related to each source. And then in addition to that, there were some informal uses or policies that may have had, may have not had formal restrictions, but were used as a memorialized practice. So ultimately the analysis did highlight some key areas of flexibility, which I'll go over in a moment. And that was done through the examination of historical performance of each of those revenue sources and the current capacity of each of the funds that they went to. Additionally, we did discover some more flexibility in some of our dedicated funds and we're excited to share what that looks like. So there were key, excuse me, five key areas incorporated into the budget strategy this year as a result of the analysis. Our first is going to be Parks Our first is going to be parks and recreation funds. The Boulder Parks and Recreation has very diverse funding sources. And that includes a dedicated 0.25 sales tax, a dedicated property tax that funds the permanent parks fund, the Recreation Activity Fund, and a dedicated lottery fund portion that funds parks acquisition and maintenance. So the analysis really helped us to be strategic in shifting certain expenses to more aligned revenue sources and in turn helped us to continue to ensure equitable recreation services. Overall, it was a great exercise and gave us a much more holistic approach to the budget as well. The next is the Transportation Fund, which at this time is very financially healthy. But we did find that it was very important for ongoing analysis to really balance our larger capital projects that are planned and then our ongoing maintenance needs in future years. So that's something that we'll continue to monitor as we continue looking at a long-term financial strategy for the fund. The next is our Dedicated Climate Tax, which supports our city's climate-focused programs, our clean energy goals, and our climate resiliency efforts. Flexibility within this fund really lies in our ability to incur debt to further climate investments as well as long-term financial planning for ongoing investments. So once again, we got a better understanding of the restrictions and kind of what the capacity is for us to do things in the future. And so that will require us to continue to do long-term financial planning within that fund. Next, the Planning and Development Services Fund, which provides our services for, excuse me, for cost recovery that's achieved through our direct customer charges, such as permitting fees or through the general fund transfer for general city benefit projects. Some fees do have limited cost recovery, and sometimes the general fund does have to supplement that. So there's a real need for review of these fees and structure of the cost recovery. And so this is something that our team is committed to. This review and analysis will be incorporated into the 2024 work plan. And then finally, the University Hill General Improvement District, also known as UJID, owns one parking asset after the sale of a second asset that has facilitated the development of a hotel. And while the sale of the asset is currently supporting UJID's fund balance, the current sources of funding, like our mill levy, parking revenues, and general fund subsidy, are not sustainable activities without additional sources of revenue. So staff's continuing to research potential solutions for that long-term financial viability of the district, which will also be brought forward in 2024. So lots of continued research looking forward. But overall, this was a wonderful exercise for our team and lent itself quite well to actually have some really significant impacts to the budget in a very positive way this year. And with that, I will hand it back to Mark.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, we're going to get into a high-level overview of the 2024 budget before hearing a little bit more about our process with our Community Connectors in Residence. So very briefly, this is at the center of the work we do in developing the budget around the Sustainability Equity and Resilience Framework. You have the budget sliced in a number of different ways, one of which is how all of our programs and investments across the city align to this framework. We are also in year two of three in our budgeting process improvements or implementing budgeting for resilience. You may also know this as outcome-based budgeting. Last year, we did a couple of major things. We oriented all of our investments around those goals that were just up on the screen. We implemented OpenGov, so all of our information is online and more accessible to community. And we improved our internal decision-making process. This year, we really focused on aligning outcomes. You'll see throughout the budget presentation, and especially the programs and all of the information online, have a much greater focus on what the intended outcomes are and how we may measure our intended outcomes across our investments. You'll hear more about our community engagement efforts this year. And then next year, we really like to move towards acknowledging we have a lot of work to do, but moving towards using data to inform our decision-making. Every year, we develop a budget. A quick overview of the numbers, the 2024 total budget, $514.8 million. You'll notice it is slightly down from last year's budget. That is because we changed a budgeting practice for how we show bond proceeds. So instead of appropriating bond proceeds, anticipated bond proceeds at the time of budget, we will now authorize that spending at the time of issuing the bond. So that will come later into 2024. That impacts utilities for '24. And so it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, say it's less than last year. More of an apples-to-apples comparison is looking at total budget excluding utilities or the general fund. Our general fund is $196.1 million in 2024. That's a 4.1% increase over 2023 budget. This is the 2024 budget by department, including capital expenses. One thing I should note on the slide, if you did your homework last week, you'll notice that there are two numbers that are different. The general government overall number and the police department overall number. There was an error in how a cost element within the police department's workforce plan was reflected artificially lowering the department's budget. The funds to cover that amount were budgeted in general government. And so we shifted those funds where they need to be in police. So the numbers you see on the screen are accurate. That does not impact your total budget number or your general fund number. There's a few slides with numbers that I'll try to walk through as quickly as possible. One of the things that we were looking at very closely in the development of this budget is the scenario under which if voters approve the ballot item related to the 0.15 in November, that would dedicate half of the current general fund sales tax to arts and related uses, and 50% remain as a general fund tax. So what this six-year projection shows you is if that voters do approve that ballot initiative, you see our total $196.1 million in the general fund. The bottom line is fund balance after reserves in those years. So we were able to deliver a budget that works. And what I'd like to point out is really on the next slide, where you see the impact of ongoing room. So what we mean by ongoing room is we have ongoing sources of revenue, like sales tax, like property tax. Those are the things that fund services and people and the things that we fund in perpetuity. We have very limited room when you look out over the six years in the scenario that voters approve the ballot initiative for the 0.15 in November. We anticipate an average of about a half a million dollars total over the next six years. So that constraint word that you heard, that is why we talk about it a lot, is because we know the needs are great.
I'm sorry, Mark, what word was that?
I think it was constraint.
Ah, got it, okay.
And this is the reason why, right? Because we are concerned about the long-term ongoing room. So without an additional revenue source or without us really realigning the existing investments we make, which is why this budgeting practice is so important. And without getting into the merits of the ballot item itself, we did want to show and what the fund financials will show, because we never anticipate voter action in our fund financials. What you'll see here is if the 0.15 is not renewed, we're in a not-good situation, the general fund, starting in 2025. And I'll just note, if voters do not approve the ballot initiative, that's under consideration in November. There is one more opportunity in 2024 to take action on the expiring 0.15 before we're in the situation that you see on the screen. Red numbers are not good. We would have to reduce services in this scenario. And shifting just very briefly, you'll hear from Raphael in a bit on the details associated with our Capital Improvement Program or our CIP. Overall, we have $141 million proposal for 2024. That's almost a little over $900 million across the six years. One of the things we'll talk about that we're excited about in this budget is the implementation of many projects associated with the Community Culture, Resilience, and Safety Tax. Many of these projects, in addition to the CCRS, are capital maintenance and enhancements in utilities, facilities, and transportation. So before diving into some of the more specifics, we'd love to take you through our community engagement process. And to tee that up, I'm handing it to Charlotte.
Thanks, Mark. Good evening, council members. I'm Charlotte Husky. I'm a Principal Budget Analyst with the Budget Office. Happy to be here tonight with our Community Connectors in Residence, Jamal Gilmore and Lenora Cooper, who will present and speak more on our budget engagement process and share their priorities that are reflected and included in the 2024 budget and reflections on the 2024 budget. Before handing it off to the Community Connector, I'm just going to share some brief background on our engagement work that we performed this year. Our office engaged the Community Connectors early in the spring of this year to discuss the annual budget process, the city's Sustainability Equity and Resilience Framework, as Mark mentioned previously, that we have embedded in our budget development process as well as across our organization, and understanding the priorities that the connectors and the community members that they work with share within that framework and helping to inform our 2024 investments. We received valuable input from the connectors along the way, as well as community members that they work with. And connectors shared this information directly with departments leading up to budget submission in our annual budget cycle. And departments worked to incorporate this feedback where feasible into their budget submission. So we are really excited to have community engagement be more robust this year and centered in our work for the 2024 budget. And working with Community Connectors was really the key piece to this. So excited to be able to invite them to share their input directly with City Council members this evening. And I'll hand it off to Jamal and Lenora whenever you're ready.
Can you hear me all right? Thumbs up, head nod, something.
Yep.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Lenora Cooper. And thank you, council and Mr. Mayor Brockett, for having us be a part of this discussion. We have a lot to share. My pronouns are she/her, and just a few of the many communities in which I am deeply embedded are various nonprofits around the city. People with disabilities in general, and especially specifically invisible disabilities, and people who are low to very low income. Or as one of my community colleagues likes to say, the poor folk.
Hello, my name is Jamal. The communities I'm a part of is the African-American community, the local radio community, the kids' sports community, and the small business community. Thank you for letting us be here today and be heard. It means a lot to our communities. I'll go right into it. The S E R goals are both holistic approach, and therefore, everything is related to racial, economic, and equity work. We acknowledge and appreciate the progress that has been made on community issues. We'll touch on, we share, we'll share what we have been continuing hearing from our communities. Still a lot of work to be done ahead, but we're pretty sure that we can get it done with your help. Community Connectors and Residents elevate the voices and build power of the historically excluded communities by reducing barriers to community engagement, advancing racial equity, and surfacing the ideas, concerns, and the dreams of the community members. Our C C and our team, we are each a part of the historically excluded communities. We connect with our committees to hear and amplify different perspectives. At the request of council last year, we are engaging directly with historically excluded communities. To understand their input on the city's budget. We have six, we've spent six hours with the city budget team to learn more about the budget and to design this engagement together. Next slide. In January 2022, we presented to the City Council themes of what we've been hearing from our communities, both community strengths and community issues. We have continued to hear about these strengths and issues in communities since then. Over time, healthcare focus moved from COVID-19 to mental health. We've wanted to be sure to include what we've already heard and been hearing from our communities in our budget engagement process to use these themes as a starting point. Next slide. Looking at 30 S E R objectives, we identified those objectives that most reflect the priorities of the C C and our teams. We have continued to hear from, we continue to hear from communities. Next slide.
All right. So we held three in-person sessions over the course of the spring. First, before we could engage with the community, we had to learn ourselves. So that goes back to the six hours that Jamal mentioned, where we met with the budget departments to learn how things work. Because before we could, we had to know how things worked ourselves before we could teach it to anybody else and then get their input in a meaningful way. We're all about things being meaningful. So we had these three listening sessions, and first we educated, which is what you can see in this slide here, the picture of one of our meetings. And after that, we switched our focus to very deep listening. We also had an electronic form that people could access and fill out while they were there. And then we asked questions and heard stories. And people were incredibly brave and vulnerable and passionate about sharing their lived experiences with us. We reduced barriers for people to be able to attend these meetings. So in other words, we did what we ask you to do, is we put our money where our mouth was. We provided childcare. We provided language interpretation. We provided meal and other things. We also, so our sample, because we like data, our sample was 74 participants. 91% of those were members of color, and 50% of those had household incomes under $50,000. Thank you. So this was a huge amount of work on the part of the Community Connectors. This presentation that you're hearing tonight and the results that are reflected in the budget proposal represents seven months of our work. We worked on other things, but it was seven months. Sorry, I don't have my reading glasses with me, so I have to go back and forth. So we collected both qualitative and also anecdotal data, anecdotal, anecdotal data. So we feel like the impact of the stories that people shared with us was just as valid and important as numbers. We also want to acknowledge that with as deliberate and deeply engaged as we were in the process with the engagement, that we completely recognize and acknowledge that there are some community voices that are not represented in this discussion. Many of the attendees were deeply involved in their communities. So they, so community members at large attended, and also people that are leaders across different communities. So they did not bring just their own perspective, but they carried collective voice and experience of their communities with them to us. I think I need the next slide.
Yes.
I need the next slide, please. So this is how the S E R objectives were raised by the community. I'll just give you a second to glance at that and take it in. Got it? Head nod, thumbs up from someone on the top row, please.
You gotcha.
Okay, thank you. So we presented our findings to the department directors on May 8. And this is critically important. We did that before they submitted their, before they developed their proposed budget. So that meant that all of this work that we did was done in a timeline where it was not performative, where it was actually had impact and import. And so huge kudos to every member of the city of Boulder team that made that happen. And so huge kudos to every member of the city of Boulder team that made that happen. Because we don't mess around. And the feedback that we got from the directors after our presentation to them was how important this was to them, that they heard perspectives that they hadn't heard previously. And they also reflected back to us that they absolutely did take in consideration the information that we presented to them when they were making their budgets. As Jamal mentioned previously, Jamal, like Madonna, like Cher, like Bonham. Um, post-COVID, there are two biggest shifts that we heard from the community. And first of all, with mental health. And the second was youth opportunities. One of the moms who came to one of the events was sharing with us her experience with her son who's eleven, twelve. And what she shared with us, and I was describing at that table, was that it is easier for her eleven-year-old son to get drugs than it is for her eleven-year-old son to participate in community sports. That haunts me. I think about that frequently. What I became even more aware of throughout this process is the importance of programming. Any funds, and y'all could look up these statistics up on your own, but any funds that are put into preventative programs pay off exponentially in terms of results. And this the S E R objectives, and I love that Mark talked about, we're measuring results. So the more the city aligns the budget to the S E R objectives, the more these community issues will be addressed. Next slide, please.
Uh, yeah, the most prioritized S E R objectives were providing a variety of housing types with full range of affordability. Uh, what we heard from the community participant was important uh because salaries should be able to cover rent and other bills and extras such as car payment and savings. But but in reality, one person who has two or three jobs still struggles to pay rent in Boulder. The next prioritized S E R objective was support financially, oh, sorry, sorry, support financial security and economic opportunities regardless of race, gender, ability and social, economical status. Uh, we heard from the community, my husband has two jobs. He does not have time to spend with my children or my kids. They grew up calling their uncle dad because they never saw my husband and that makes me extremely sad. It it is unjust. The third most prioritized S E R objective was support the city of Boulder advancing racial equity and implementing implementing uh equity equity strategies and tools. Concerned about how the Nepalese or Nepali community will be treated by the city staff experiencing uh racial disparities in accessing services and resources. Next slide.
I think you can mention.
A moment, please. Uh, yes, it is me. So with these objectives and again, the one that that haunts me to this day is the woman that shared that it's easier for her son to get drugs is that widening back in that larger perspective because it's about so much more than our kiddos um and their ability to access sports. That's a really easy thing for people to understand. Whether you have children or not, that's that's something that's easy for people to grasp. And what is important to remember with these S E R's objectives is the broadening back and supporting all of the communities. Next slide, please.
All right, I am gonna take over this slide and then hand it right back to y'all. So we wanted to share um just a slicer, a a um, an example of the um investments that are included in the twenty twenty four um budget as aligned to the community connector priorities. So what you see on this slide are the top three priorities that Jamal and Lenora spoke to. Underneath each of these are examples of um investments that are included in the twenty twenty four budget. Looking at the first uh in high, the highest priority for community connectors of housing affordability. There's a total of two point three million included in the twenty twenty four budget to support the Ponderosa stabilization project for continued development of long-term affordability for residents of the Ponderosa neighborhood in North Boulder. This uh project will eventually support the building of seventy-three new energy-efficient, permanently affordable homes in that neighborhood. Under the second top priority for community connectors and the community members they work with is financial security and economic opportunity. Um, within the budget is a total of four hundred and fifteen ongoing increased funding to help support community grants um for community members experiencing health disparities. And this increase in funding will be uh administered by the the Housing and Human Services Department through the Health Equity Funding. And finally, uh, for the city of Boulder advancing racial equity and implementing equity strategies and tools. We recognize the importance of the Community Connectors and Residents Program. And in the twenty twenty four budget is a, an ongoing amount of fifty thousand um that will help support this this program on an ongoing basis with stipends and and partnership funding. So again, this is just a a snapshot representation of the information that we shared with community connectors a few weeks back of the investments that are included in the twenty twenty four budget as aligned to the community connector S E R uh objective um priorities. Um, but uh with that, I will hand it over and and the next slide back to Jamal and Lenora.
All right, you know, you all know I like bottom line. So here it is. The more the city aligns its budget to the S E R objectives, the more the community issues can be addressed. And to me, our mandate is abundantly clear. We can make the decision as a city to choose to use our resources in a way that will make a significant difference in the lives of our community members. We started on this path and now we can choose to continue. We all know that a rising tide lifts all boats. And with these enhancements that are being put forth by the city budget or within the city budget, what that's going to do is that's going to lift up more of the lowest boats.
Uh, this is great work. I really enjoy being a part of the community connectors. Uh, this it's really hard work. Um, and how much I love Boulder being here for the twenty-five years I've been here doing various things in this community. Um, this is by far the hardest that I've 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 dug into the community and different communities. Um, and people that I normally talk to and normally break bread with, I have. Uh, and to hear their stories and to hear their complaints, um, because uh traditionally or historically, I'm I'm from a community where it's not been very easy to survive in Boulder, especially uh with the new, like even the beautification process that happened in Boulder is kind of a smack in the face to my community. So it's tough to dive in to some of these issues without being really emotional and and very passionate about it. Uh, um. But with that said, there's been a lot of great achievements that have been happening, you know, with sitting in the Tate Building and other stuff that's happening around the community, um, different block parties and recognize, recognizing uh small business and such like that. Um. But what I really want you guys to understand with this work is that it's gonna take a while to unpack a lot of this trauma. Like this is, uh, I I appreciate the ongoing support from the city council and Boulder in large. But we're gonna, it's gonna take years, uh, just like at the library is gonna take thirty years to or or so to be in their space. In this space, uh, historically, that's the people have been overlooked and stepped on. They're reluctant to talk to us, so we have to come up with really unique and strategic ways to get into their communities to actually pull out this information. So uh, we would love the support from city council and the city of Boulder to keep this going on for years and years to come. Uh, thank you again for having us here and to listening to all the concerns from our communities.
Thank you both, Jamal and Lenora. That was a really great presentation. Um, just wanted to uh share some next steps and future collaboration for budget engagement. So we're we're uh including in the twenty twenty four budget um two uh new or expanded programs, Boulder Social Streets and the Community Wildfire Mitigation Grants Program, which we'll speak to in a little bit, but um we have invited uh community connectors if interested to um partake in partnership opportunities for program development. So they would be able to provide input on these newer expanded community-facing programs that are included in the twenty twenty four budget. Um, looking forward to the twenty twenty five budget engagement and budget development cycle, we hope to continue to um further our engagement efforts with community connectors and to continue um as well to perform broader community engagement using our Open Gov community feedback tool. I'll hand it back to Mark.
Thank you, Charlotte, and again, just appreciate uh Jamal and Lenora for being with us this evening. I see Bob's hand before we transition.
Well, let me just ask our facilitator, um, Lauren, Lauren, um, would this be an okay time to ask questions of the community connectors or do you want us to wait till the end of the presentation?
Well, I guess I was wondering if the, if there's a plan for them to stick around for the whole time period or if we could, if we ask questions now, does that potentially help free up some time um this evening for you guys?
We're, we're happy to go either way. I'd I'd yield to Lenora and Jamal if they plan to stick with us or they'd like to get out a little early.
Go, Bob.
Yep. Bring it on.
Okay, let's do that.
Well, thank you, thank you. Um, first of all, I I just wanna um thank Lenora and Jamal and and the whole community connector team for all the tremendous amount of work um you all did over the last, gosh, more than six months. Um, this is exactly what we were looking for. Um. Those of you around for the budget last year know that there was a little bit of frustration on council that the, while the community connectors were brought in, they remain, maybe not brought in as early as we had hoped they they could be to form the budget. And the work that the community connectors did this year, I think, was exactly what um we were hoping for. So I really wanna thank all the community connectors, Lenora and Jamal, uh, and Tinker for being here and doing exactly what we had hoped you would do. And I hope this what you all did in twenty twenty-three will serve as a model for um all future budgets with the community connectors involved. I I hope, you know, the day after we approve the twenty twenty-four budget, you burst into flames and start working on a twenty twenty-five budget with with the finance team. That would be so great. Maybe, maybe, maybe take a day or two off, but but.
I was gonna say, give us a week.
Yeah, okay, okay. Uh, I do have one question for for Jamal and Lenora. Um, I, it sounds like you you are are because you were so involved and so integrated in the planning of the budget, um, it it sounds like you're endorsing the budget, which is really helpful for us. If there was like one thing, uh, keep in mind, um Nuriya's uh magic constrained word, so we we don't have unlimited money, but within the scope of of the money we have, there was one thing about the 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 budget that you or your fellow community connectors could change. Could you, could you share that with us? What 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 little adjustment would you like to see? Or are you just delighted with the budget and you hope that we approve it as is?
First. Uh, I I think it's it's around mental health. I think there would be the strongest push as uh uh people are starting to come out of their shells a bit, uh, uh, health-wise and physically and mentally healthy. Um, it it's tough. A lot of people are 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 needing a little bit of a time to adjust to the period of being back in the public. Um, and and now again, we having more health scares, especially right after uh the summer, people going abroad and bringing back bugs of new strains and such like that. Um, to be welcome into their home, welcome us into their homes, uh, strangers, uh, that mental health component, it it's it's really important. It it it, that would be like the top priority for us. And and that goes across all uh racial barriers, uh educational levels, like everything, like uh most people need to be mentally stable so they can hold down a job, so they can keep the house that you built for them, so they can participate in the parks and rec services, so their kids can go out and play sports. Um, so that mental health piece, I think, is real crucial.
Yep. And then what I'd like to amplify around what Jamal said is um is community, is is putting an additional focus on community-based mental health. So that's things like the um I can't remember what it's called, but the AccuDetox Training, that's community members for community members and by community members. So moving from a top-down model to continuing to support and invest in resilience within, uh, just like Jamal said, across all communities. And then in addition to that, and this is I don't wanna land myself in hot water, um, but a a um, and I don't know the right word, but an adjustment or a change in how Boulder administers its mental health support financially and otherwise, because we're not a small town anymore. And the system that's in place worked great when we were. And now it um if I'm gonna speak really bluntly, they do excellent work and it's not up to the task because of the current structure and constraints to meet the actual needs of the community. And that can be, um, one example is going to be a lack of enough multilingual, multicultural therapists that are available. I mean, that's just a really simple, straightforward. Anyone can understand that this is a problem example. I could go on, but we're already way past time. So I won't. Um, other questions? Or Bob, did that adequately answer the question that you proposed?
It it really did. I I really appreciate both of you answering that question. And I appreciate your your candor and transparency on that. That's really helpful because over the next few weeks, we'll be talking about potential adjustments to the budget. So it's really helpful for us to know what things you think we might um adjust in this budget if if we can. And I see that Erin and and Nicole have questions, so I'm gonna yield the floor to them. But thank you so much for all the hard work you've done over the last several months.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Bob. And yes, I see Erin and Nicole. I have a question too. And please, if anyone else has questions for the community connectors, please raise your hand and get in queue. Thank you.
Well, I just have to offer a quick enormous thank you, uh, Jamal and Lenora for the extraordinary work that you and the rest of the connectors did on this. And just wanted to just point out and and appreciate how you got in early. You did the community engagement. You gave the feedback. It went to the directors before things were baked. And then that feedback made its way into the actual budget. And then I loved how you showed that thread going all the way through to now, here's how it made a difference in the budget. So it's just incredibly impactful, like you all made a real difference here and the budget is reflecting work that would not have been done without you. So just, I'm just very, very grateful for all of that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, we can't wait to go back to our communities and share with them that their input actually moved the needle. Because a lot of their concerns were that their input is, that no one cares.
Yep.
And so to show them that there is some care in Boulder, that I think that that'll go over tremendously well, especially with our our immigrant communities and such like that.
I do have something completely off topic that I would like to throw in and Ryan is. I do have something completely off topic that I would like to throw in and Ryan is white knuckling it right now. I wanna amplify something that Jamal said, because I think it's very important for you to understand and to have that inform your expectations of the CTIRs. So we are contractors. We have no benefits. I'm not asking to not be contractors. I'm not asking to get benefits. I wanna be super clear about that. As Jamal said, this is emotionally really hard work. And we, we get secondary, tertiary, whatever is the numbers after fourth and fifth level of trauma that we need to hear to do our job. And we get our stipend and that's it. So I, we want to continue with this work. It is incredibly important to us. We are all passionate about it. And as you continue to ask for things from us, bear this in mind. That's it. And most of the time we say yes. Sometimes we say, uh, no, but most of the time we say yes. But keep that in mind. I see hands.
Yeah, thank you, Lenora. I think Nicole, you're up next.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to address that point, Lenora. I just really appreciate that, Jamal. Thank you also for raising it. Um, I think it is really important for us to keep that in mind, that it's not just the hours you spend working, it's the ways that you need to take care of yourself. Yeah. Can everybody hear me? Okay. Right, okay.
Oh, we can't hear you.
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Um, and Lenora, can you hear me now? Okay, uh, but yeah, just, um, you know, noting, noting that there's a lot of work that you all are doing afterwards to take care of yourselves, your communities and everything as well. It's not just the time that you are, um, spending in these meetings and outreach events. So, um, thank you. Thank you for, uh, spotlighting that. Um, and I also just wanted to thank you for participating in this process and giving so much time, um, of yours and your communities to, uh, to give us this feedback. In my opinion, this, uh, budgeting work that we're doing over the last couple of years that will continue for a few more years to go is some of the most transformational work that we will do as a city this century. And the fact that you all are participating in this way, giving us this feedback. I know it's not just a one and done, you know, hopefully this is something we can continue doing from year to year. Um, and, and, and I just, I, I just wanna acknowledge that as well, that it is transformational work and it would not be as transformational without the work that you are doing. So thank you deeply.
Thank you so much.
Um, what I was wondering, and I think this speaks to the amount of work that you already do. Um, you know, our process, we'll talk about it a little bit later. Uh, we are going to have a couple of weeks to give some feedback, to talk with staff about um, ways that, you know, we may or may not want to change, um, anything that is in the budget. And I am just curious if there is a, uh, um, already some planned, uh, a planned role for you all in that part of the process. If there is any way of getting some feedback on any changes we may propose um, in this budget, um, I, you know, I'm thinking about some other ideas around that, like we have to state which of the connectors, you know, um, priorities as this touching on as we're talking about changes or talking about, you know, adding or removing things. Um, but I was just wondering, you know, as we get, go toward a public hearing, will we hear from you all again?
That would, um, be directed to Ryan?
Okay.
And I, um, Ryan Hanchin here, uh, community engagement manager. Let me see if I can bring myself over here. Thank you. Um, appreciate the, the question. Thank you. And, um, you know, I think we would have to chat with the whole team to, to make sure that you know, that the scope of what we're looking at was, was reasonable, but, um, you know, I think the, the team would be open to exploring what that may look like. So, so we can, we can discuss with the, with the budget team and with our whole connector team and see if that's something that folks are open to.
Can I just add too, and I, I know, I think Mark was probably gonna chime in at some point. Um, I appreciate it. I think those kind of suggestions every year we will get stronger. I wanna appreciate, uh, Jamal and Lenora for your, um, support as we have been moving forward. We hear that and wanna assure both you and council that we plan to continue this, right? Our goal is to continue to hear from our community and find better ways, learn from this experience, uh, expand as we can. And so know that we remain committed to that, cause it is so vital.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Um, and just one kind of related question. I don't know, Nuriya, this is for you or for connectors or for finance team around this. Uh, when we think about doing the adjustments to base, um, and budget adjustments, is that a place where you see some feedback as well? Or, you know, looking forward, are we really just talking about kind of the main budget? Budgeting process that would involve continued connector feedback?
Yeah. Yeah, appreciate that.
Answer a piece of that.
Oh, I'll start and happy to hand it over, uh, Lenora. I, I think, um, we're open to ways that we can be effective. And I think one of the reasons why we tried to focus on the early window in March and April and May was that is the time where we're really developing priorities, developing the budget. It, it starts so early in the calendar year. And so I, I think that's where, um, input can be most effective. Um, as we're kind of nearing those decision points with adjustments or the annual budget. You know, that's when we, we really get into the, um, you know, around the edges, right? We're making changes where we have the structure of the budget kind of in place. So, um, just with that caveat in mind, I mean, we are certainly open to expanding our, our partnership and making sure that we're, we're hearing from, uh, community throughout our budget decisions.
I, yeah. Okay. So I wanna amplify what Jamal said about the historic mistrust that is with many of, well, all of the previously and historically excluded communities. And since we're now approaching the refinement part of the budget, and as Ryan said, we would have to talk to the entire team. You see Jamal and I here, but we, and you'll notice in our language, we use the we all the time. We're before you today, but we are representing the voices of our entire team. Um, and in terms of the refining of the budget, I would, uh, okay, don't use salty language on Phil and Lenora. Um, I would say, I think that that would be incredibly important because that's going to be the ultimate manifestation and reflection of this entire process. So to me, and I'm only speaking personally here, this is I, not me, to me, that's the only thing that actually makes sense. And I'm fairly confident from having served for several years now with, with this amazing group of people that most of them would agree. Does that adequately answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you so much.
Excellent. I see another hand.
Was there anything else you had, Nicole? Okay, you're done. Thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna jump in. Um, so I guess I was just wondering if there's anything you would ask from us to help ensure that we are getting the most out of this process? You know, I hear, um, and it resonates with me that, you, you know, the, I appreciate that we're going through this and the effort and everything going into it. So just if you have any recommendations for either as we continue through this or in future years.
Would you please ask that again with fewer words?
Do you have any recommendations for how we ensure we're getting the most out of this process?
Go ahead.
Um, I think that the, the, the right, that we're on the right path. And continuing in, in that process as, um, the city manager, um, mentioned earlier that this is going to be ongoing, it's going to be refined, it's gonna get stronger and better every year. And, um, I would, you know, when we're talking about budget, and again, this is strictly I right now answering this question, this is not the we of the team, um, but, but, um, consider finding or, um, allowing us to find, I don't even know the right way to language it, ongoing support and personal development. Cause like I said, and Jamal said, and we will all say this, it is incredibly hard emotional work, what we do. And we do it so you don't have to, is part of it. Um, so finding ways to continue to support us, to support our, um, capacity building, to support our professional development. Um, all that kind of things and stuff. Does that adequately answer your question that you asked?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
I'd like to add to that a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would love to have you guys, or at least one of, uh, uh, we've spoke about this at our, we had like a little party get together in North Boulder, um, and we would like to see you all in one of our meetings. Like, like, uh, like one of you at a time, we probably don't have the capacity for all of you, um, but, uh, one of you at a time, we'd love to see you at our meetings. And so you can get to know who we are and, and not, cause we are more than just a tool for the city. Um, you know, we are actually business owners and residents and, and community members and leaders in our communities, like, so we would like you to get to know that about us more than just like spilling off some data in about six minutes, you know, like to understand like where we see the, how we, and where we see things going. Um, cause we got to touch on a little bit of like the past and a little bit of what we want in the future, but like the dreams of the community is, I think, relevant for your jobs. And I think you should really take a part of that. Uh, and I've been doing it for, uh, a little over, a little, about a year. And I haven't, I mean, I know most of you personally, but I haven't seen you in the meetings. And so I would love to see you guys there. That's, I think that would help out us, cause I think the just coming into the city council meetings is a little bit more formal and, and we try to be on our best behavior. Uh, and, and sometimes it's a little tough, but we would like to, uh, see you guys where it's a little bit more relaxed and we can actually have a little bit of fat chewing.
I love that. That sounds great.
And it's very important for city council to understand that, that we are a very cohesive group, but we are not modelist. We have some very heated discussions from very different perspectives and even opposing perspectives. And I think that it's really important to understand that as well. And that's one thing that if you want at a time started to, um, come and spend a half an hour with us, um, would start to have a deeper and broader understanding of us individually and as a group. And as, I love what Jamal said, we are not just a tool for the city to use.
Thank you both for that answer.
I see a hand.
Yeah, I think Matt was up next and then we have Tara. I can't hear you, Matt. Even though your mute sinus off.
Got nothing.
Maybe we'll skip to Tara real quick and like, oh, there you go.
You got you. Okay.
The headphones failed. Um, gotta keep quiet, cause my daughter sleeps above my office. So, um, hopefully she's already asleep. Um, I, I first just thanks Jamal and thanks Lenora. I mean, I, I think we've also, everyone who's come before has sort of just said the gratitude there is, is palpable on our end for the work you do. And I take Jamal's words to heart that, that you are definitely not just a tool for the city or so much more than that. And that, I think that speaks to the point you made about the mental health side of not just for the work you guys do and the vulnerability you have to do to put your whole soul out there to receive this information and how you connect and how you translate that to action and advocacy for, for us at the city. And I'm just sort of curious, I mean, one of the challenges we face is although almost all of that mental health service is provided by the county.
Okay.
And so it's hard for us to pull that lever and, and do that on our end. But there, but we did have a little discussion, it wasn't quite ready for primetime about creating our own smaller scale behavioral health tax. And so I'm wondering if that's something that, that would be, that, that we could bring, um, perhaps to all the community connectors to have a discussion on as to how we go about, again, it won't be the scale of what the county could do, but it's better than nothing. And it starts to at least take some bites out of the challenges that everyone faces. Um, as Jamal pointed out, coming out of COVID and just all those traumas that sort of compound on each other. So just wanted to throw that out there and ask if that's something you'd be interested in working with some of us on, um, and see if we can procure that. And maybe, you know, something we could get on the ballot next year. Again, it takes councils' will to, to do that, but I just wanna, I, I wanna start with the can, community connectors and see if that's something that, that we could do to, to meet some of those very important needs.
Yeah, that's perfect. Uh, man, I think that's exactly what my invite was about. So my invite was definitely about what the city can bring to the table for the community connectors and what vice versa. Um, so that'd be perfect. Um, I think that's exactly the the, the route we need to take on this. Uh, and, and li- little by little, heal by, you know, heal little by little and then go back out there and receive your thousand no's and and I'm sure you guys, you, you guys know the same, you know, the drill, like it's, uh, you go out, the community, you go into the community, you think you're gonna have a good time, but everybody bashes you about everything you're not doing right and what they could be doing better and, and your shirt color is stupid and you're, you know, and all that stuff, you know? So I, I, I totally, I get it. Yeah. So that'd be great. Like a little bit of help, uh, mental health. It started from the city would be great and a little bit from the county would be great. And like, so when we go out there and we knock on those doors and we're like, hey, this is what we're proposing, this is what the city's proposing. It's not really us, but we have to inform you about this, cause our job is to teach our community how to advocate for themselves. And so, and sometimes that just comes out as really passionate speech. And we have to discern whether it's love or hate or a little bit of both. And, and we're standing there naked, you know, like we, we don't have, you know, there's no police officer with us. There's no, there's none of that. Like we just sit there in our space and we, we take it. And, and sometimes, sometimes really hard to take. Uh, you know, and, and so, yeah, we would love to have, like I said, invite you guys to one of our Friday meetings for a half hour or so, and you kinda go over some of that stuff, go with that plan would look like or what we would ask from you. Um, cause you know, we are dealing with community members in community that have their own trauma and trying to fix trauma in the community. So that's, that, that's, that's a tough spell, you know, it's a really tough spell.
Yeah.
Council members, just to know, if, if you would, and I apologize for, um, saying it, but I love this conversation and what I'm hearing is a great interest to do some one-on-ones and know that we will take that back and actually try to schedule those. Cause I know just like, uh, council member Benjamin, there are probably other council members that have a particular priority area. So we're hearing that. We love that invitation, Jamal, and we will figure out internally how to make that happen, uh, and extend that invite. So just love that.
Excellent. And I just wanna, um, address, um, council member, um, Benjamin's question. Is that what you're suggesting is exactly aligned with what the community has requested? So, yes, please.
But I, I appreciate that. And, um, you know, the, those of us that will be on the, the next council and certainly before, we, we would love to, um, have those conversations and see how we can bridge that gap. Um, and, cause that's an important one to do. So thanks for daylighting that and showing the importance of it. And, and we wanna work with you on that. So look forward to, uh, seeing you guys on a Friday.
Super duper. Did that adequately answer your question?
Hundred percent.
Thanks, Matt. I think we have Tara up next.
Hey, Jamal and Lenora. I'd love to come to your meeting and also any parties. Just go.
I really, I gotta, if, if you did not come to our community connector community celebration, you all missed out.
I want to, no, invite me, I'll be there.
Got it.
Invitation? All the time.
Good. Um, I have a few questions for you. First of all, as you're speaking, some of the things that you've said have reminded me that the Parks Department, cause I was on the Parks and Rec Board prior to city council, does get involved in some of these things. I know they are really heavily focused on helping youth and helping, um, in some of the communities that we, we don't hear from as much as, uh, we should. So my first question for you, well, first of all, I'd like to say that that's why I wish that we had a talk about a constrained budget. The Parks Department has a super, Parks and Rec has a super constrained budget. And I think that that could really, if they had an adjustment to base, I'm thinking already, the adjustment to base. If they had a larger budget, uh, especially where we can, um, add things like, um, youth sports, which, uh, you discussed and you know, other things that can lift the mood, you know, for mental health and such, especially loneliness is such a big problem in our world and our country and in our community. Uh, I think that could have a big effect. So I'm wondering, have you, are you involved with the Parks Department already? Have you discussed anything with them? Is that, um, something that you're interested in doing or it's already happening?
I think we did a little bit of, uh, Parks Department once. I think I was in a meeting of that.
Learning about some specific programs.
Yeah, yeah, we do. We did, we, we were in that vein, uh, but as we dug deep into the, Uh, the conversation about that, there is. There's more work to do around that, like it it's tough, you know, because it's all about dollars and cents. Uh, but if there's could be some partnerships between other established like Kick to Build, like we understand like there's a lot of, uh. Uh. Spanish-speaking, uh, youth that are wanting to be involved in soccer. So and then. There's not enough funds for them to go every day. So it's like, you go to a camp once a week and that's just not enough for. Kids that want to play soccer. So like if we could do a partnership with like Kick to Build, I don't know what that partnership looks like. I'm not a part of Kick to Build. I just know they exist, just like I know their, the rec centers things exist. I'm just thinking if we could. Alleviate some of the responsibility of Parks and Recs and put it on, uh, an existing, uh, an established. Uh, community member like Kick to Build. Then the Spanish community or the Spanish speaking community can join them and play soccer multiple times a week versus. Once a week, and I think that alleviates some time for parents and mental health and all the rest of that such. Uh, so I think, yeah, there are some things that we could do further, um, with existing part of partnerships that probably don't exist or do exist. I have no idea, but I think there's been a ton of requests for more youth activities. Uh, things that are just not keeping them in the, in their areas. So I don't know if you understand this, but. You rarely rarely see people outside of their communities because there's nothing for them to do outside of their communities. So like, say, if you're in, uh, a mobile home community, you're gonna stay around your mobile home community. And not really venture off into other parts of the community unless there's an activity for you to go out there and do such. And that activity has to be welcoming. So you can't have a bunch of non-Spanish speaking people or, uh. Non-immigrant people, if you want to broaden a little bit more to being in a. In like, uh, an activity and expecting these folks to come and join that, there's a little bit of, uh. There, most of them aren't as outgoing as Lenora is, and so, uh. They're a little bit shy to that effect. So they'll say, yes, 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 but when it's time to come to it, uh, the anxiety effect of all that, because, um. How people are perceived in this town is really different than what we say, uh, in this town. So we say we want inclusivity, we say we want equality. Uh, and and I think that. The terms don't translate into the actions. And so when the, when said community goes out of their community. They're 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 met with all this anxiety and and around that. And so like, like I said, like, there needs to be more partnerships. Uh, more marriages between stuff that already exists in the community that's happening, so you don't have to recreate the wheel and. The, uh, professionalism and the know-how from the city and Parks and Recs. So I I I. And that's again, something we could dive deeply into in a Friday meeting, like that's something. And and then then you'll have like the Nepalese community represented, then you'll have the Native American community represented, then you have. The African community represented, and it's not just Lenora and I sitting here spewing what we heard last week, you know?
Well, I I think, uh, Nuri is right. I mean, each one of our, uh, us council members probably has one or two things that is. You know, heavily on our minds after listening to you speak and those Friday night and slash party opportunities would be a great. Really, I'm looking forward to to doing that. I'm very excited.
We will be sure to make that happen. This is such an exciting conversation as we talk about budget. I know that, um. Parks and Communications and others in the city have been talking a lot about the child-friendly initiative that we're doing. We've got some monies from. Um, some of those Bronco franchise money, so we will be having more conversations just about that in the future. Because we've got, um, a bit of, uh. Some future spending to do that is focused just on youth activity. So anyway, I know we got a lot more in the budget. And just know that we will make that effort and we will try to get. Um, all the council members to your meetings, uh, so they can talk about their individual issues as we move forward, because it is so rich.
One at a time.
Yeah, and we also extend that to everyone that works in the city. Like if you have, you know, you work in the city and you really want to dive into the community and see what they feel like. Uh, uh, see what is really resonating with them and what's not resonating that you're already offering, um, no one is shy to give you an opinion, like. It's really, it's really easy to get that information out, um. But like I said, one at a time, you know, it like two of you is probably a lot, but one of you at a time, just because you guys hold such heavy weight, you know? It's it's it's, you know, you're easy to look at, but your, your position in the city sometimes can influence people's. Ability to express themselves.
Yeah, they can be intimidated. And I just, I want to amplify what Jamal said and put it in perhaps slightly different language. What we hear from the community all the time is. Is the acknowledgement and the need and we understand, we understand, especially the community connectors after all this. Seven months of process that we've gone through with the budget budget constraints. And and to me, almost every program, every department is woefully underfunded, you know, my personal passion project is the fire department. So I beat that drum every chance I get. But what Jamal was saying about more marriages with different organizations, another way to think of it is desiloization. And so the more, um, cross-pollination and the stronger, uh. Now I'm losing my words, it's been a while and my brain is tired. I'm sure yours is too, are all as well. But that just to continue to think creatively and more think of it as weaving. And how are all these different strands that we can pull together for the betterment of every person that lives in Boulder? Does that make sense?
And and my last, my last thing I want to say to you is when you do come to us, um, please research your verbiage.
Oh, my God, yeah.
That that's a really big thing. I don't know you ever get expressed by that, but like, um, a lot of the verbiage that you speak every day. Is sometimes. Abrasive to the communities you're trying to reach and and that language that you speak in your silo may be okay. But when you come into the rest of the community, i- it's not okay, um, like, uh, quick example, we got. We got ties into like, uh, the historical. Uh, district and trying to put the the civic park or the city park into an historical thing. And then it came with the language of beautification and we have a community connector, uh, that has direct lineage to that land. And and so would you with, just in that little phrase of of beautifying. This part, the beautifying the city or that that hurt her, like it really, it touched her because her family was living there. Before the park. And so, you know, that that insinuated that what they were doing before was not beautiful. And so it really, it it agitated her, she had to leave the meeting because it it just, it didn't resonate with her very well. And so like, I really, it's really important that you research your language, like it's, and and I'm not trying to like, say what you want, but like. I- i- if it comes up, like. It it's the language that it's hard to get around sometimes, especially when you're dealing with like the native population and. And other, I guess, yeah, other overlooked communities here in Boulder. And so like, just simple words, like you, you think the word beautiful. This is a great word, it's it's a, it's a, it's it's a warm feeling word, but sometimes it's not. And so I would, I would, when you come. I would please, please just research your language and like, and and I'm not, I'm not saying that we're trying to police what you say. And you feel free how, feel how you want to feel about things, but do you understand that when you speak to us, we're thinking historically? Like, we're thinking of, like, not just what you're saying right now, and if you've heard it somewhere else and you're repeating it. Please, please know what you're saying, like, i- i- it just, it just takes the meeting in a whole different direction. And and then we have to apologize for what we say to somebody because they get their feelings hurt because we're. Listening to our community, we're deep into our community and we understand what the community really is looking for from you all. And so like, when you come with. Uh, what you think is not hate speech and it winds up being hate speech, it it's just not helpful for our meetings. And because they're, they're not very long meetings. And so like, it just to like, you know, and we don't have the ability to run late. So it's. Like, when you do come, please, please research your language.
The seven and a half months worth of work that is being. Presented to you today, that took place in almost exclusively one and a half hour weekly meetings. So we are incredibly efficient. And, um, we welcome you, we want you to come. And be good guests.
I I appreciate it and know that we will follow up on that and we are, and I just appreciate Jamal, you're bringing up, language is important. Um, it it it's just as important to know intent and impact as we move forward. Uh, it is why perhaps tonight you're still going to hear us refer to things like master plans, but know that we know. That that is a training word and that is not a word that we want to move forward and are working actually to shift. Uh, that word as we move forward. Um, and so like that, we will continue ourselves to dive deeper. Into the equity work and we have continued lessons to learn as we are thinking about it. So just so appreciate your insight tonight. Know that this will continue and I have made so many notes to make sure that we. Extend that invitation and that matchup with council members with you. So just appreciate it.
How would you like to be invited to the parties? That's the last thing I need to know.
That sounds great. Thank you, Jamal and Lenora, so much for the work that you're doing in our community and also for spending this time with us tonight. I am. Think we need to also get to the rest of the budget presentation, um, but we appreciate you so much. Thank you.
Thank you all. And thank you, Ryan.
And Ryan.
All right. Thanks, Lauren, and thanks again, Jamal and Lenora. Awesome discussion and we'll touch on a few things here, um, maybe a. A little quicker through these next slides, but a lot of the stuff that was mentioned. Uh, is is in at least in part, uh, many of the investments within the 2024 budget. So we'll run through these as quick as we can and. Uh, get to some more questions, uh, hand it back over to Charlotte.
All right, thanks, Mark. So looking at the first highlight, uh, in of investment included in the 2024 budget is a total of 2.7 million. For behavioral health response, this includes both the CARE and the CERT teams, which are alternative co-response programs. That focus on responding to dispatch calls that, um, might be better served through an alternative response. With healthcare and social service, uh, professionals. In the 2023 approved budget, city council approved one-time funding from the general fund of nine hundred and sixty-five thousand. To support the CARE pilot program and recognizing the importance of these efforts in behavioral health response. Uh, the CARE program was established as an ongoing program mid-year in 2023. With permanent staff of case managers, clinicians and paramedics. Uh, a total of 1.32 million was included in the 2024 base budget with these mid-year adjustments that we performed this year. For the CARE program and in included in the 2024 budget for additional new investment is a total of 774,000. For, um. Additional funding to support items such as staff training, partnerships with community-based mental health providers. And equipment for case managers and clinicians and paramedic PPE and supplies for emergency vehicles. Next slide. Affordable housing, one one slide back. So, um, affordable housing is a key theme in in the 2024 budget. We have a total investment of 31.8 million. With key projects supported by several front, several funds across the general fund, governmental capital fund and affordable housing fund. There's a total of 13.1 million that will support affordable housing projects in 2024. That includes the Ponderosa stabilization project, as I mentioned previously. The Hilltop Senior Living Center and Diagonal Plaza, Grace Commons, among other, um, housing projects in the affordable housing pipeline. There's a total of 18.3 million, uh, included in the 2024 budget for the Alpine Balsam, uh, Balsam development. This will help to support the Western City Campus at Alpine Balsam. In 2024, it'll specifically help support funding for the horizontal infrastructure for the future campus. As well as affordable housing development for 144 planned affordable units, uh, at that site. And we're working with Boulder Housing Partners for this development and and plan to be reimbursed for a portion of this cost. Um. Additionally, there's a total of 450,000 included in the 2024 budget, um, included in this is a 137,000. Increase, ongoing increase to help support the Keep Families House program, uh, uh, administered by the Emergency Family Assistance Association or EFA. There's a total of 1.1 million, um, with a $100,000 increase in the 2024 budget. For funding for permanently supportive housing vouchers, um, to, uh, help with, um. Uh, to help fund 48 local PSH vouchers for rental assistance and services. And finally, there is a code amendment planner, uh, one, uh, 1.0 FTE staffing increase to support proactive changes. Um, that simplify processes and as well as, uh, focusing on, um, code changes, um, for permanently affordable housing. Also included in the 2024 budget is funding to support human services supplemental basic needs as well as community grant funding. There is a total of 4.2 million, uh, included in the 2024 budget with a 415,000 increase, as I mentioned previously. To help support community members with health disparities. This will be administered, uh, within the health equity funding, um. Supported by the Housing and Human Services Department. There's a total of 81,000. Included in the 2024 budget with a $25,000 increase for, um, community events to raise awareness of civil rights, human rights and equity issues. And this will be, uh, supported by our human relations office. There's a total of 567,000 with a 25,000 increase for home repairs and improvements for manufactured home communities. Um, this focuses on community engagement efforts and energy efficiency upgrades for homes in those areas. Such as, uh, energy-related home repairs and weatherization improvements, um, and this, uh, these efforts are supported by. Our climate initiatives and communications and engagement departments. And finally, there's a total of 911,000 with a 63,000 increase in the 2024 budget for parks and recreation outreach and inclusion of. Uh, initiatives for people with disabilities and underrepresented youth. Looking at community wildfire resilience that is included in the 2024 budget, this slide specifically focuses on. The 1.5 million portion of the climate tax, um, and we know that there is work, uh, uh. Across the city that is performed by various departments. So this 1.5 million is not reflective of the comprehensive efforts and and the. Uh, entirety of the budget number, but, um, focusing here on the, uh, climate tax portion of the wildfire resilience efforts. Um, the this climate tax is passed by voters last fall, um, and is a total of 1.5 million to support, uh, wildfire. Wildfire resilience efforts, um, included in the 2024 budget, uh, that is, uh, new is implementation of the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. Or the CWPP, that's a total of 456,000, um. Examples of implementation of the CWPP include fuels reduction, home structure hardening and community education and outreach. And really the focus here for the CWPP is wildland, focusing on the wildland urban interface area. In addition, there is a new program that I, uh, uh, touched on previously. That is included in the 2024 budget and this is the Community Wildfire Mitigation Grants Program. And this will help to support the resiliency of community members with a total of 682 planned, uh, investments of grants. To help provide direct support for Boulder residents, um, looking to mitigate fire risk. And I will toss it off to our other principal budget analyst, Sarah Hancock.
Thanks, Charlotte. Um, another key theme in every budget process are continued investments in our city employees. Uh, this represents a new investment of 8.3 million and there's three key areas where we're seeing this funding needing to go. Uh, one includes our living wage increases. We have a budgeted increase of 489,000 to support living wage increases for city staff and service contractors. Um, this adjustment will increase wages to $22.44 per hour for all impacted city staff and contractors. With an estimated 121 city staff and six current service contractors that would be impacted. The second are our updated collective bargaining agreements. This year, the city finalized three collective bargaining agreements with the International Association of Firefighters. The Boulder Police Officers Association and the Boulder Municipal Employees Association. Um, increases include our wage increases, market rate increases and stipend allowance adjustments. And then finally, our non-union merit increases, um, is an increase that represents our standard yearly base cost driver. That's included in our annual budget and this year the increase is 4.2 million across all funds with 1.7 million in the general fund as an impact. And I'll hand it to Mark.
All right. I'll talk briefly about safe and managed public spaces. Uh this budget includes an investment of 3 million overall, 2.4 in the general fund. Um what this budget proposes is to uh continue ongoing funding uh for the additional encampment management team that was that was added in the 2023 budget. And then extend one-time portions of the of the program uh for ambassadors and urban park rangers. There's a correction from the memo that it's 820,000 for four four three uh to extend with one-time funding through 2024. Uh the goal is to uh continue to analyze these aspects of the program. Uh look at the data and make a recommendation on the permanence of the aspects of of this program uh for the 2025 budget. Uh also note, um Financial Strategy Committee uh did receive a request from Downtown Boulder Partnership, which uh operates the Ambassador Program to add an additional 103,000 uh dollars to the program. Uh we did visit with the Downtown Management Commission uh this week uh which did support the recommended budget of um uh splitting the the Ambassador Program in 2024, one-third in the general fund, two-thirds in the Central Area General Improvement District Fund, which is different from how we previously funded it, used to be 100% in the general fund. Uh they also recommended the additional 103,000 to come from CAGED as well. Um that is not currently in the recommended budget, so that would have to be added um into the budget before first reading and we'll talk a little bit about the process for that before we close out this evening. And with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Raphael, who will talk about our CIP.
Thank you, Mark. Uh good evening, Council. My name is Raphael Tingley. I'm a senior budget analyst within our budget office and I'm pleased to briefly walk you all through some of the highlights within the recommended six-year CIP, which covers fiscal years 24 through 29. Um as Mark mentioned earlier, the total six-year CIP amounts to a little over 900 million across about 200 different projects, the majority of which are focused on capital maintenance or capital enhancements. I'm going to quickly run through a few of these projects, starting with the most significant project that is funded out of the general fund-supported governmental capital fund, which is the Western City Campus Project. Uh the most recent estimates have the project estimated at a cost of about 168 million comprised of 18, 18.3 million for horizontal infrastructure, flood mitigation and permanent design costs for the site, which are expected to be incurred in 2024. Um as as Charlotte mentions uh briefly, this is to benefit the site as a whole, which includes the portion of the site which will contain low-income housing being managed by Boulder Housing Partners. Uh it's being recommended to cash finance this amount in 2024, which is made up of 5.6 million that was transferred to GovCap from the uh general fund in the first adjustment to base earlier this year, and additional 8 million general fund transfer to GovCap in 2024 with the remainder of the uh that amount to be covered by existing GovCap fund balance. As we move forward with the project, we will certainly want to identify and transfer additional one-time sources to replenish fund balance and work to drive uh total required borrowing down for the remaining capital construction costs associated with the project. Uh the remaining 150 million is programmed in 2025. Um facilities and fleet is continuing to explore options for for what uh public-private partnerships may look like for the campus, uh the possibility of ring fencing savings uh from the closure of older buildings that could potentially be leveraged to pay for debt service or availability payments and the sale of buildings, which would be uh consolidated, which could be used to pay for a portion of the capital construction costs. Uh one of the recommendations included in the budget is to increase the annual debt service, which has been set aside for the project up from the current 3.6 million annually up to 6.1 million annually to account for the increased cost of borrowing and total project cost. Uh that amount of annual debt service would get the city between 70 and 80 million dollars in capital with the remainder that would need to be covered through alternative funding mechanisms. Um and that debt service is currently programmed within our uh financials to begin in 2025. Switching gears over to the CCRS Fund, um since a voter renewal of the 0.3% uh community culture resilience and safety tax in fall 2021, these dedicated sales tax revenues have supported 31 and a half million for several capital projects, uh most notably including the the final portion of funding for fire station number three and city acquisition of streetlights from Excel. Uh the 2024 to 2029 CIP recommends an additional 13 million in appropriation for new projects in 2024 and 123.7 million over the six-year time horizon to support uh key CCRS projects. To uh to help support the acceleration of projects and to allow the city the flexibility to harness these tax dollars as they are being paid by community members, uh staff plans for CCRS debt issuance of about 62 million in 2026, leaving some flexibility for additional projects that could be financed from the tax in uh kind of near the end of the of the uh life cycle of the tax in the 2030s. Um I'll go through very quickly uh some of those projects now that will be funded out of CCRS. So uh first is the continued planning, designing, construction costs for renovations and retrofits needed at the East Boulder Community Center. Uh this is the single largest project within CCRS programmed mostly uh within 2026. One of the it's certainly one of the flagship CCRS projects. It was mentioned in the original ballot language and it will cover a deep energy retrofit and renovation and infrastructure upgrades needed to the facility. Um in 2024, design work will include robust community engagement and energy assessments. And within the out years, there is an opportunity for funding facility upgrades to the other recreation centers to address program and infrastructure needs. Uh next is land acquisition and construction costs associated with the replacement of both fire stations number two and number four. A replacement of these stations will provide more modernized emergency services to the community, which promotes safety and resilience. Uh fire rescue in conjunction with the facilities and fleet department are working to determine which station should be uh replaced first and figuring out locations. Both uh both fire stations are estimated at about 18 and a half million dollars each uh with 2024 focusing on the land acquisition for one of the new stations. And these stations are expected to be completed in 2028 and 2032. The next project is schematic design scoping and construction for phase two of the civic area project, which is focused on activating the core downtown park space, reimagining uh the civic area, you know, to be a destination that serves as a model for future viable social spaces that are more uh welcoming. Uh this is working to fulfill the next phase of the civic area master plan, uh recognizing that that plan uses an outdated term there. Uh this this funding in 2024 helps to support some of the initial community outreach and design for the project with the bulk of the construction costs expected in 2026 and 2027. And then last but not least, uh capital maintenance and capital improvements along the Pearl Street Mall in preparation for the 50th anniversary for the mall uh happening in 2027, which will address capital maintenance and capital enhancements. This focuses on updating the play spaces programming for art and the redesign of key spaces to better serve users and business owners with a focus on activating the space and improving access to the public restrooms. The CIP calls for the majority of this to be funded using using uh CAGED funding, that is the Central Area Downtown Improvement District Fund uh with about 1.2 million that's recommended to be funded out of the CCRS tax. Um and then very quickly, uh other notable capital projects and other funds include the 19th Street Multimodal Improvements Project within the Transportation Fund, the Violet Park Development Project, which is funded out of the Transportation Fund and the Perm Parks Fund, improvements to East Boulder Community Park programmed out of the Perm Parks and Point 25 Sales Tax Fund and the Barker Dam Outlet Rehabilitation Project, which will be funded out of the Utilities Water Fund.
Okay, um so now we're gonna go through some of our other operating investments by goal area. Um I would like to go ahead and note before we review each goal area that I will be swift. Um but also, these programs are really representing highlights in each goal area and they're not exhaustive of all our programs within each goal area. So um these are the highlights that we thought were most aligned with our key themes this year and we really wanted to share these areas and what the city plans to invest in. So first, we have environmentally sustainable. Um some key investments we're making in this area are resources and stewardship in our uh OSMP department. 8.4 million dollars to enhance Boulder's ecological, agricultural and water assets. We have 4.8 million dollars in our Planning and Ecological Services Program within Parks and Recreation that will manage the capital planning, design and construction and 12 historic and cultural resources. Excuse me, they already manage that. They've continued to manage it. Um and the highlights include maintenance of parks, urban tree canopy and natural land to ensure accessibility and safety. And then finally, energy management, which is a facilities program um that focuses on the strategic approach to the city's energy profile, carbon emissions and renewable energy sources. In our livable goal area, we have a few key components. One of the largest being our 29.7 million dollar investment in community investments of affordable housing and compliance. Um this investment is in development projects as well as other grant projects and programs related to housing assistance and human services. Homelessness Services uh which is a program that supports the unhoused community through the MuniCorp programs, Be There and other outreach providers. We've already talked at length about our Behavioral Health Response Investments, um which will support our care and co-response team of the CERT teams and our Community and Mediation Resolution uh program, which invests in eviction protection and rental assistance through the EPRAIS Fund. In our accessible and connected goal area, we do have investments in our transportation planning and operations, which is increasing safety and connectivity along our city's multimodal street network. Um this includes investments in hot transit skills and our services and transportation demand management and programming. That's a mouthful. Um that also includes transportation maintenance and parking and access as well as investments in our program of creative services and external communications, which is how we provide our external communications and other services like Channel 8. In our safe program, uh we include several uh key components of public safety, including our emergency operations program, which is 21.3 million dollars. Uh this program provides critical life safety responses across the community through the fire department. And the highlights include continued growth and implementation of our advanced life safety support, emergency medical services, training, support of and training and support of the community assistance response team or care team. Um also, we have our patrol services in here, which is 18.8 million dollars that contributes to the safety of the community through proactive and engaging policing. And this includes continued support for patrol, traffic enforcement and our neighborhood impact team. And then utilities, oh sorry, I skipped over utilities maintenance, but utilities maintenance is also a key component of our safe goal area. Um in our goal area of healthy and socially thriving, we have our recreation and parks operations at 20.6 million. This is our program that really supports the day-to-day management of our facilities and public spaces. And within this program, there's three key service areas, including urban parks, recreation and regional facilities that um really help to invest in our recreation facilities, parks and community benefit, youth and teen programming. We have investments in trails and facilities at 8 million dollars to help support the design, construction and maintenance of OSMP's physical assets. And that includes trailhead, network, signs, trailheads. And then our older and older adult and family services program, um which provides services to adults 60 and older um at our age well centers. And that includes programming for health, wellness, fitness and lifelong learning. In our responsibly governed goal area, we have our fleet services program at 11.4 million. This is where we have all of our planned capital replacement for our city vehicles and that includes our transition to replacement of vehicles with all electric or plug-in hybrid whenever possible to meet our climate goals. We have our investment of 9.1 million in our risk management program that uh seeks to minimize risk for city employees, residents, visitors. Um and highlights include our city's insurance programs, our workers' compensation and liability programs. Our IT infrastructure uh services is the maintenance and use of our reliable data, fiber infrastructure and our communications infrastructure for the entire city. And then finally, our facilities maintenance uh program, which is primary is the primary maintenance function for all city facilities. And finally, economically vital gold area. Uh this area uh has three key investments this year, including economic vitality and district management at 2.9 million. This program is really supporting our healthy and sustainable local business environment and complementary services and programs within our special general improvement districts. Um we have our citywide economic vitality uh program, which is also developing and uh developing and implementing strategies through public-private partnerships to also build those healthy and resilient economies while also can uh preserving our community's character and quality of life. And then finally, our taxpayer services and compliance program, which really seeks out to to promote a fair and equitable tax collection system while have also having pro uh proactive and responsible customer service. So I breezed through all of that and would like to reiterate again that that is um those are highlights and our transparency portal does have all of our cities' programs um with lots of detail uh that you can look at and kind of dig into and I will pass it back over to Mark to talk about our next section.
Thanks, Sarah. I will uh bring us home. Uh so we always uh like to point out uh that as amazing as this budget is, uh there are unfunded and underfunded needs that we must point out and uh also think about how we're handling that for the future. Uh to give you an idea of what we're talking about when we say unfunded needs, um the most recent snapshot we have across the organization was a part of a needs assessment that we did in January related to the uh reallocation of of library budget resources. Uh the needs that were captured were specifically related to general fund needs, so they weren't all encompassing, but they did give us a sense of what the needs are across departments. We separated those in four different categories, uh core operational needs being the largest of which over 16 million. Um others are included there. The total need was around 30 million across departments, some of which were addressed within the 2024 budget. But some examples of where we would still uh have unfunded needs going forward relate to the increase of maintenance costs across our facilities in order to meet our goals within uh that plan. Additional affordable housing uh support uh to continue uh increasing the pace at which we're able to do affordable housing projects, fire master plan EMS implementation, uh parks maintenance across the system, uh extending and expanding human services associated with ARPA programming. And then uh just most recently, a reimagining policing plan and recognizing costs there. Uh so uh and like I said, these are general fund-focused uh areas, but we know that other funding uh goals and targets are set forth in other areas uh with dedicated funding uh that may not be able to meet those needs as well. So how do we tackle that, um especially uh when it does seem overwhelming? Um we we need to continue uh to uh look at our master plans across the board um and understand where we've made investments and and where uh we have opportunities to prioritize, especially utilizing our budgeting for resilience, using data to make uh decisions going forward uh so that we can even uh decide if a program isn't meeting our goals, isn't meeting our intended outcomes, that we're able to shift or realign those resources. A a citywide strategic plan will help us with this. Uh we have uh talked with the Financial Strategy Committee about the internal work going on to create a citywide strategic plan. We hope this will help focus our efforts and organizational resources and eventually replace our current iteration of a master planning tool with something uh more appropriate and helpful as it relates to budgeting. And this plan eventually will come back to council in a way that we hope will help with priority setting so that we can say stay focused on those issues most important to community. And last but certainly not least is the concept of a long-term financial strategy, which we think would be a main component of a citywide strategic plan. We will continue that work with the Financial Strategy Committee through 2024. I won't read through all of these pillars, but just to say that long-term financial strategy is not just budgeting. Budgeting is one of those pillars, but there are others, including looking at the balance of sales to property tax, looking at things like uh dedicated funding and our approach to that, uh setting in in stone reserve policies and looking at the overall structure of our budgeting practices. All of those will work in concert to make sure that we are sustainably funding uh ourselves going forward um and in a way that best meets community goals. Okay, so last slide of the evening is uh the requested process uh for uh council review. Uh so you all are getting a lot of information this evening. I'm sure you will have questions and uh digest, continue to digest. Um what first reading is October 5th. Uh the packet will come to you uh September 28th. What we're asking you to do is propose changes to staff, uh if you have them, uh to us by September 25th. What the Financial Strategy Committee members recommend strongly is to reach out to us to assist in crafting any proposed language. And that's really to help you make sure that we know where we're pulling from, right? If we're increasing something ongoing over here, we'll have to have some type of trade-off conversation and we'll be able to more easily identify where you may have some choices there. Last year, we did this over hotline. That was because of a compressed timeline. We have an extra week here. So the deadline is really so that we're able to summarize those changes and put them in the packet so that community can see what any proposed changes may be to the budget. Our goal is always to have that first reading, even if we're making changes, we have a clean first reading on October fifth so that we can adopt a budget two weeks later. At least that's the plan. And that is the end of the presentation. Appreciate your attention this evening and we have many, many staff available for questions.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, first hands up. I see Nicole and then Tara.
Thank you. And Mark and Bob, is it okay if I just just kind of speak as we discussed at the FSC meeting last week, just a little bit about the zero sum aspect? Okay, cool. So what Financial Strategies Committee is really, really, really recommending, if there is something you want to add, say where it's coming from, what are we removing so that we're really getting to that zero sum? So so as you're talking to staff, as you're making those recommendations, for any changes, just make sure that you've got both of those things in mind. So I'm happy to defer to others for questions. I've got a few, Lauren, but I can, I can hold off for a bit. Just wanted to get that in.
Okay, Tara.
Okay, all right. Let me get to my list of that four questions. My first question is going to be from Mark Wolf. Mark? Do we have, wait, let me just make sure that I am, oh yeah, I'm not on mute. That's good. Good news. Okay. Mark, do we have anything left over, sorry about my New York accent, in ARPA funds? And can we use any of that to support our partnership with EFA for direct cash assistance? I'm wondering if there would be an opportunity to increase EFA's allotment for direct assistance, especially in regards to the twenty twenty five minimum wage push that we're waiting till twenty twenty five for that. So that's my first question.
Yeah, thanks, Tara. So we do, I just want to point out, we have an ARPA update attachment. We didn't get into it tonight to the memo. So a little bit more detail in there. Generally, we're making good progress on our ARPA investments across the board. That's, that's good news as we've set out those priorities. We did have some funding set aside for utility bill assistance and we have used tapped into some of that money. We believe we're at a point now where we'll still have it available, but we think we've reached the need as it relates to utility bill assistance specifically. And so that may be an area where we're able to hit some of those other basic need categories as we enter the winter and over the next several months. So we do have some flexibility there, maybe about two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand dollars, somewhere in that realm. So trying to keep those funds flexible as needs arise.
Okay. Great. Raphael. Question. I didn't see, I know you said that you didn't mention everything. I didn't see anything about the South Boulder Rec Center. In fact, I didn't even hear anything about South Boulder. I know a lot of people in South Boulder are wondering what's the story with that? And I'm wondering if you have any insight.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll, I'll let Ally or Joanna Crean from Facilities and Fleet jump in and answer that question.
I don't see Joanna, so I'll just snag it, but know that we're working closely together. We've got some really great people in the facilities team, Ally Rhodes, Director of Parks and Recreation. So the South Boulder Rec Center, as the Facility Master Plan calls out, and as we are aware on the daily, is at the end of its useful life. So the intention is to get east up to snuff, both from an entry perspective and to serve the community. We expect so that some of the renovations will allow us to support then some major changes at South. We don't know what it will look like. We have to have a conversation with the community. We have to do some financial analysis. And that's part of the Rec Center's future project that will take place in twenty twenty four. So Tara, the the short answer is that's because we don't know, but what you'll see in the CCRS funding is money in the out years so that as we figure it out, we can have some dollars planned. Joanna, feel free to chime in if I missed anything.
No, that's good. That helps. Next question about our core maintenance needs. I'm remembering that, and I'm not sure who this is for, but I'm remembering that we got a gazillion, and I might be exaggerating, letters about snow and ice removal back last year. And Natalie said we would have to have a community discussion when the time is right. Of course, I'm wondering if that's now before the winter. And as well as potholes. And I'm wondering, I know that in one of the slides that you talked about how maybe we can be flexible with our, with our dedicated funds and use some of the money that we would for larger projects to do core maintenance. Is that something that is possible?
I think generally, it's a trade-off when we're talking about the dedicated funds and maintenance versus larger projects, specifically on all things snow and ice. I'm going to punt over to Natalie Stifler.
Thanks, Mark. Natalie Stifler, Director of Transportation Mobility. Yeah, we are actually in the middle of that snow and ice project that I said that we would do. We have done some community engagement and we plan to do a little bit more engagement in the coming months and we'll be sharing kind of what we hear with council and an IP before the end of the year. And what we hear from that, we actually have already incorporated some of what we've heard into the coming snow season and other findings from that will potentially have just more significant budget impacts that we'll need to go forward for the twenty twenty five budget. Are, and as I said last winter, and I think it's going to be the same thing this winter, our biggest issue is really staffing resources and contractor resources. And so even with more funding, we'll still likely have that challenge. And that's what continues to be an issue both on snow and ice and also on pavement maintenance, the potholes specifically.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's, that's really helpful. My next question is related to, I don't know, maybe I have six questions. I was pretty quiet all evening, so I hope you guys will not mind, is related to pilot programs. And when we make a pilot program, this might be for Nurya, do we then have it forever? Or do we ever look at our pilot? This is not sarcastic. Okay, it might be slightly sarcastic. Do we ever look at it? Do we say maybe it's not working? Or is this, what's the story with, because we're constrained now, so it would be a good idea maybe to look at some of the pilot programs and say which are we want and which we don't want.
I appreciate that question and certainly welcome finance to weigh in as well. But, but I'll say this, right? Like the use of pilot programs both has a particular solid use. You want to encourage innovation without incurring sort of ongoing obligations, because sometimes they work really well and frankly, sometimes they don't. So you want to know where that funding source is coming from, but you do want to encourage trying some things, right? I think it was the premise behind Bloomberg's innovation teams across the nation. At the same time, I'll say that cities in general, not just Boulder and certainly cities, you know, everywhere you hear as well, that pilot programs have a way of sort of just being folded into the budgetary cycle. And we want to make sure that with pilot programs that we're thoughtful about it. I think we're endeavoring with the outcome-based approach that we're doing is really going to take a look at those numbers and see what those tell us in the future. And frankly, I think it's overdue to look at some programs that aren't pilots in the very same way and start figuring out if we should not continue them because there are other programs that perhaps would get bigger outcomes. But in general, it's a tool that has been used by cities in a variety of ways. And sometimes it's innovation, sometimes it is, we only have one-time dollars to do, so let's try something new. But certainly, I hope that we have the discipline enough to question whether this should be ongoing in the future or not before folding it into something that is ongoing.
Yeah, I mean, I really like pilot programs. Don't get me wrong. It's just, you know, I just want to throw out there into the ether as Matt would say. Social streets, when I went to a lot of those events, they were poorly attended. And so I'm hoping that we look at that before we start, you know, pushing, putting that into our budget for the next five years or what have you. Let me just make sure I don't have any other questions. I mean that only the nicest way.
Absolutely. And I think you're going to be getting an IP on Boulder Social Streets at some point here before the end of the year. And I hope we have a conversation around that as well.
Okay. And I have one last question, and that is for whoever made the slides. It might have been at the beginning, why is Colorado facing a slowing economy versus the rest of the nation?
That's a good question. I think one of the indicators, and now I'm trying to remember back several weeks, was related to our job growth being slower than the rest of the country. And that's an abnormality. We're normally leading the country, or at least in the top fifteen or so. So that is, that is something that is interesting. Unless Cara has more to add, I'd have to go back and look at some of the other indicators as to why Colorado is lagging. But we're seeing that both locally and as a state.
Yeah, I remember the same as you, Mark. So really, I think it was jobs related. And I think housing is also challenging and the cost of housing.
Thank you, Tara. Mark, it looks like you're up next, and then I'll ask a couple of questions as well.
Okay. First, I want to additionally support what Nicole said about the zero-sum budgeting concept. You know, feel free to ask for more and different, but find the money to do it because it's got to come from somewhere. And I, Tara raised the issue of street maintenance, potholes and snow removal. I'm, I'm pretty sure Natalie, that based on the number of emails we've gotten, I can kind of predict what our community outreach is going to, going to say to you on that issue, which is we have too many and too little snow removal. And so it's something where we are going to need to address sooner rather than later. And I have many, many, many questions, but I've submitted them in writing already, and I'm not going to ask them here. I'll give staff an opportunity to think about it and respond, and we can have some further conversation further down the line. So thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I just had a couple of sort of broader questions. I really love this outcome-based budgeting approach. And I just wanted to know if there's anything besides picking both where we would want money to come from and what we would spend it on for any changes that we like to make, would like to make. If there's anything you would ask from us to ensure that we are getting the most out of this enhanced budget process, either related to this current budget or for future budgeting processes.
Thanks, Lauren. I'll take a shot at that. I think the last couple of slides that we went through are important, certainly in thinking about role of councils that relates to this budgeting process. I think a long-term financial strategy is a component of that and looking at opportunities for new revenues for sure, but also thinking about longer term, right? I mentioned the sales and property tax balance is one of those examples. Property tax not popular at the moment, but if we're thinking about funding sustainably and equity as a community, what does that mean as taxes expire over the next ten, fifteen, twenty years? So having a policy in place would be valuable. And that's a council conversation. I think as we look towards evaluating programs with data and Nurya just mentioned, if we determine that something is not worth doing anymore because it's truly not meeting the impact, there's, there's going to be ramifications to that, right? Because some of those programs will be reaching certain segments of our community. And so that, that'll be a difficult conversation that we'll certainly need your all support on as we approach those. And so I think a two-way conversation about the best ways to prepare for that, especially as we begin setting targets and gathering more data and information as we evolve in this method of budgeting.
Can I just add, as long as we're in that wish list, Lauren, and appreciate the question. But I, I would add, joining us in this journey of thinking about what we currently call master plans is fascinating. The way we do it here is, at least to me, a little unusual, but as we're moving as a city, we are actually lifting up and trying to create a citywide strategic plan and thinking about how do we envision everyone's department strategic plan or department plan as we move forward and really think about what are the resources that we're going to need? That shift, I think, will, we really want you all to be on that journey with us because frankly, the current sort of fiscally constrained action or vision and the inconsistency across everyone's plan currently just is, makes for winners and losers in a space that really should be talking about prioritization and what is it timed for and what do we have resources for as we think about it? So that journey, we're going to be hoping to tag and to leverage FSC, but that'll be a hard conversation as well, along with what do we stop doing because we think that we could do more, right? So just joining us on that journey of really difficult prioritization and hopefully explorations of things that could expand, impact is going to be exciting.
Thank you, Nurya. And then the other questions I have are related to city staff salary and benefits. So I was wondering if we've done a benchmarking study, how we compare related to both salary and benefits. And also, there was a living wage mentioned, you know, we're increasing, we have salary increases related to living, the living wage where we're matching the county's living wage. How many employees does or what employees are and aren't affected by that? Because I know that doesn't cover, I believe, lifeguards. And so just a better understanding of that would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, happy to start and others feel free to add if I miss something. Yes, we have done a couple of recent studies of our compensation structure. Most recently, rolled out the final changes to that structure at the beginning of twenty twenty three. And so a part of that analysis was making sure that we're competitive regionally. And so many base wages were adjusted if they needed to be to be competitive in the marketplace. And so we feel good about where we're at now. And then we've also implemented a system where we'll be updating biannually, looking at how competitive kind of each job, family, if you will, is in the marketplace. So that that is ongoing work to make sure that we're where we want to be from a compensation philosophy position. And then on the living wage question, so it's related to a policy that we established a while back and how we calculate that living wage. So in recalculating it, we'll move to that twenty-two forty-four an hour, I think it is. And that impacts about two hundred employees if I have that right. And so it doesn't, it doesn't apply to all. It implies to full-time or fixed-term employees. So temporary staff, it does not apply to. So same thing with contractors, that it's a certain segment based on that policy that was established. Forget the exact year on that, several years ago.
You have, if we have an idea of how many people that doesn't cover in terms of, like as a percentage of the city employees or something like that?
I don't have that on hand and I see David Bell popping up.
The living wage reservation that we're speaking of now does cover all but seasonal and temporary employees. Generally, we have about seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty seasonal or temporary employees rolling through each particular year. Some of those are already above that living wage marker point that Mark just mentioned. Others would be coming in below that. And then the series of distinct positions, the lifeguard and center, they would be lagging that piece as well.
Thank you. And that was it for my questions. And that was it for my questions. I see Nicole has her hand up.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you. First of all, Nurya, Mark, Cara, Charlotte, everybody on the finance team, all the departments as well. This is truly transformational work, and it is so exciting to be witnessing this. And I know it's a lot of work. So thank you. Thank you for that. I just had a couple of questions that I think maybe are more process related. One of the things that I'm wondering about as we're moving toward more of these key performance indicators next year, how are we defining the program effectiveness that we're going to be using outcomes to measure? And is that kind of something that will evolve as part of that process? Or is that something that you're starting to have some awareness now?
Thanks, Nicole. That's a really good question. I would say that it's, it probably comes next. Not that we're not always evaluating the effectiveness of programs. We are doing that across the board. But in terms of a systematic approach, we really need to, to figure out how we're measuring first and what data we're using. And then we can kind of get to the point of, okay, these, we know these outcomes are in common. We know we're trying to meet these specific objectives. We're set on the measurement tool, we're set on what, what it is, and that, and then we can set a target. So I think we want to make sure we're, we're aiming before firing in that way on, on those data targets. That being said, many of our programs were constantly evaluating in variety of different ways, working with the communities that we serve. So it's both and in that way.
And I think my question was maybe like step zero before that of how are we defining what's an effective program? Like, what is the like, is it not, not in terms of measurement, but you know, say this particular program, we're really looking for it to have a big impact on resilience, or this program's really meant to have a big impact on equity or sustainability or climate readiness, or whatever that is. That's, that's kind of what I was wondering. How are we defining what the North Star is for a given program so that we can figure out what it is we're trying to measure?
Gotcha. Yeah. So I would say that this year was a, a good starting place where we said, these are intended outcomes for, for all of our programs. I, I think our, our next, and we haven't had a chance to kind of debrief and say, what, what has worked well? I, I think what we'll probably learn is that we need to continue to, to align better to our, our CER framework. We need to, the citywide strategic planning tool that was mentioned, that will help make sure that we're focused. There's many different objectives within our CER framework, which are those that are, are should rise to the top based on the need that we're seeing. So I, I would say that it's iterative and it'll be something we're working on in advance of the next budget cycle.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Kind of ties into my next question, and you're welcome to answer this one shortly, because I think you may have just answered a piece of it. But I was wondering about how something like our racial equity goals fits into the budget this year. How did that, how did that show up in the, the ways that you were thinking about where to allocate funds?
Yeah, I think I would, I would add that one of the steps that we took as an organization was updating our sustainability resilience framework to center on equity. And so as we say, the CER framework now equity in the center of it. With that, it was intentionally looking at the objectives within that framework to make sure that equity was infused throughout. And so the, the outcomes that we hope the programs are, are intending to achieve are, are all aligned to equitable outcomes across the board are, are, are intended objectives within the CER framework. So like I said, that process is iterative. We're not perfect right now. But equity was very much at the center of, of the, of our, our outcome based approach and, and the budgeting process this year.
Yeah. And then one, one sort of last process or any question. So every department, you know, usually has some ideas about where they're headed over the next few years, right? And our strategic plans and things like that. So in thinking about how the community connectors feedback was used to inform some of the priorities, I mean, what, what kind of changed, right? What is it? I, I think what I'm, what I'm looking for is just a little bit of transparency and, you know, it wasn't just that the community connector said this thing, and we took this thing we already wanted to do, and we fit it into this box. But rather, you know, how did it evolve and change our thinking? I think I'm just looking for a little bit of that.
Yeah, that's a fair question. I, I think one way I'll answer that is you know, the need is much greater than the resources available. And you heard that tonight even from community connectors directly. We had 26 some million dollars in, in need that was requested from departments in the general fund alone, knowing we had about $3 million in, in resources to be able to apply to those needs. So what we did internally is really make sure that not only in the, the ways that departments were forming their budgets and helping get us there in terms of prioritization. We were able to utilize the feedback provided through the process of, of sifting through those 26 some million dollars in requests and, and putting together a recommended budget package that hopefully is reflective of, of need, reflective of community connectors feedback.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I just want to say, I think you all are doing amazing work around equity. So that wasn't intended to be like, you guys really doing that? Just really wanted to get that transparency. So thank you. And just, just one final kind of question, you know, we know our population of older adults is going up. When we're looking at, for example, older adult services, are we seeing more need? Are we seeing, you know, any anything on the horizon for kind of some increases there? Because as population is going up, our money is relatively consistent. Sort of a less, less ability to serve individuals.
Yeah, thanks for that question. I see Kurt popping up.
Good evening, Nicole and Council. Kurt for Hover Housing and Human Services. I thought I was going to get through to my tree on my screen, but that's, that's a great question. So, and I know that you've been spending some time over there talking to residents and that sort of language. We appreciate. We definitely have seen the needs increase for our older adults. The other observation that I have, the, the older adults primarily that go to services at West, at the repo and, and night. Many of them are simply living on social security. And so with the inflation we've had, you know, over the last couple of years, it's really significantly impacted those, those individuals and households. So we've we've, we've definitely seen an increase in rent supports that we've been giving out for such individuals. But what I'm clearly hearing is that, you know, we're not really meeting those needs. One of the things we did consider and talk about this year is additional. We have sort of like case managers that help navigate older adults to services and support that they need. And so we're looking for some next year at needing to possibly increase that capacity to, to meet the needs of those individuals.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Sorry to bring you up on camera.
Thanks, Nicole. I see Matt's hand up. Maybe after his questions, we could start moving into comments and work towards wrapping this meeting up.
Let's see, can you hear me with my headphones on this time?
Yes, we can.
Hey, all right. Sweet. I can keep my daughter asleep. Love that. It feels good. So Kurt, you're gonna have to get, come back on. I'm probably going to double dip on you here. So sorry about that. But so my question centers about that roughly $800,000 that we had set aside for this year's current budget that was supporting the day service center. And I know that we had some plans and lots of things change about starting it maybe third quarter and things have slid. And so I'm just wondering, how do we, in this instance, when we've already set aside a number, we're probably not going to spend it in this year, or maybe only a piece of it. How, how does that then translate into 2024? Is that a gain of savings? Is there some discretion now with that? Or does it roll over? I just kind of want to know when we have that sort of unspent pot that had a very, very specific intent, what, what, what we do with that and then how we go forward. Kurt, you're muted.
Thank you. So I'll, I'll go ahead and answer what I can of that. And then Mark may correct me on some things as well. So what we do know is that this is a new program. We have anticipated costs that were that were put together to create this budget. It's also highly possible that day services may cost more to implement than what we have in the 2024 budget. So you are correct that that project is starting at a slower rate than we had anticipated a few months ago. So there, there definitely could be some savings. I, I wouldn't necessarily define those savings as in place yet though, until we actually get closer to some, if you have anything additional from an approach standpoint.
Yeah, Kurt, I would just add that so any, any budget this year for day services that doesn't get spent would go to fund balance. I, I think what Kurt is referring to is until we know exactly what the, the full project is, it'd be good to just know that we have that there in case costs do go above what we're budgeting for 2024 at this point.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just mention that both our, our surfing killer programs, you know, we had budgeted both of those programs before they started. Both of those programs are costing a bit memory we originally budgeted as we've implemented them. So that's, it's not unusual for them to roll out the money as well.
Okay, I, well, I appreciate that. And I, I'm, I is it inappropriate? Now, obviously, we, we, you started earlier talking about the prime effect. We don't know what that is. I, I, I think it's fair to say that we'll probably have an interesting adjustment to base in November, perhaps a good one. And so is it fair to sort of say that until, like, could we, could we think about using that fund balance now for something that, again, one in the hand is better than two in the bush, that, that sort of analogy goes. That maybe there's things we can attack now while we're still waiting for that program to establish itself and then allow the ATB to take on or to fill that at when we get there. And so that's what I'm trying to understand is, is that one, is that an appropriate way to sort of think about things? And if so, maybe that gives us some flexibility with some chunk of that to hit some of those immediate needs now that are present. And so I just kind of want to get a sense from, you know, best practices. Is that something that we could be looking at?
Yeah, appreciate your question, Matt. I'll try not to do too long of an answer, but we've, we've, we've really tried to get out of the practice of doing large adjustments because then we know the needs are, are so great that kind of reacting mid-year to the things that come in are really hard when we're trying to look at all of our goals across the board and make strategic decisions. That being said, we absolutely want to be responsive. And as needs are, are great and emergent and timely, we can use adjustments to base. Typically, we don't use the second one of the year because the appropriation runs out at the end of the year. So anything we wouldn't spend or obligate within that few weeks window would just go back to fund balance. So that first adjustment of the, of the new fiscal year, so in this case would be next May, is an opportunity to look, especially if we had operational savings or additional revenues that we weren't expecting coming in, all that to be balanced that we've made some structural changes to how we budget to try to make sure we're programming our resources more effectively. And so we're, we're not having so much floating cash, if you will, that's kind of hidden in the, in, in rolling over fiscal years. So some of that's in the weeds, but that's to say that we don't have as much flexibility to kind of do large adjustments as we did in the past because we've made some adjustments. And if there's an opportunity to meet a need, absolutely, an adjustment could be appropriate depending on the, the source of money, given all of our constraints.
I, I appreciate the answer. I'll, I'll reserve some, some comments on, on how we sort of thread that needle. But, but I, I think, appreciate that context, Mark, and, and thanks for your, for your answer on that, Kurt. Appreciate that.
Do you want to kick us off with comments, Matt?
I don't like to go start and then start again. I, I'm gonna catch my breath and let someone else go.
I just don't see any hands jumping up to try and take that spot. Oh, there we go, Nicole.
I'll do it. Take one for the team. I just have two really, really quick things. One, if folks are up for this. Because of how much time the community connectors and residents put into their feedback for us. I'm just wondering, as we're proposing changes, maybe one thing that we could talk to staff about is where our changes fit into some of the priorities that they identified, and if that could come back to us in the packet. So I think that's a question for everybody as, as we're moving through here. And, you know, I think just this Matt's Coach Prime, Prime Effect kind of question just has me wondering as well if we're going to be thinking and talking about any additional revenue. I imagine there's also costs that come from that in terms of additional demands on the city staff, everything like that. So I, I think it's, we're going to have information on what it might get. I think it's also important for us to have, again, zero sum information on what it's costing us to. Thank you.
Okay, Matt.
I'm, I'm, I'm kind of, I caught my breath. So just piggybacking where it would, I, I, I mean, I think, I, I appreciate the, the, the financial practice that goes into that second ATB. But I also get the fact that if we're going to be seeing some boosted revenues and, and I expect us to, I mean, I think that's a, it's a pretty, pretty, I think we can expect that to be the case. Now, what it is, is a different question, is to say, look, if we're still holding on to money with an unknown launch of something that's, I, I, we have these immense needs, like I think rent assistance, and I think quite honestly, some safe sleeping environment that are $60,000 a year for 27 spots. We know this number. We've seen it in other cities. I mean, that, that's a tiny amount of money to do an immediate need that, that really helps move us along in our priorities. So you know, oh, I think I froze. Oh, I think I froze. Anyway. So to me, that, that's, that's, that's where I want to see some of that flexibility. And I know we don't want to spend what we don't have, but I, I think we know that we have that money and can fill it in as we get further along. So I'd really like to challenge staff to think about how we can creatively meet those urgent needs now while we have a program that's sort of waiting to launch. And there's factors outside of our control in that. So I, I'd really challenge us to find a way to do that. So I hope we can, we can do that and happy to get creative and figure out ways to do that.
Thanks, Matt. I see Aaron and then Rachel.
Well, I just wanted to do a thank you, Steph. You did an extraordinary job here with this budget. The last few years that I've been on council, each year I think, wow, this budget is the, the best one I've seen in my time on council. And then the next year I'm like, no, no, this is the best budget I've seen. It just keeps, keeps getting better. And the, the creativity that you all have used in terms of, you know, looking at dedicated funding and how to be flexible with that. And then finding the dollars that while still being in a, in a a safe, conservative way for the community's bottom line, but dedicating as many dollars as possible to the deep needs in the community and the community's priorities is truly extraordinary. So just wanted to offer a huge thank you for how well you've done this and how you're reflecting the community's values in the direction of council. And I just feel like we're moving in a very positive direction here. And then highlight in particular the involvement of the community connectors. Really appreciated from Lauren, Jamal being here earlier, and the way that their feedback was incorporated in a deep and meaningful way. I think it was a really great step forward as well. So I'm, I'm just gushing here. That's, that's my thoughts. So thank you.
Thanks, Aaron. Rachel.
Thanks, Lauren. I'm just gonna say two quick things. First, I think I support what Matt's asking for from following it. I, I think he's asking for us to repurpose the unspent operation, operations dollars from 2023 for a day shelter that didn't open, which was just south of $1 million, 700,000. which was just south of a million dollars, seven hundred thousand or something. So in theory, that was like a top council priority to uh help address the needs of our unsheltered um adult homeless population. And so we didn't, we haven't gotten to do that in two years. And so can we now, as winter approaches, um pivot that money towards something that that maybe helps uh the the folks we were trying to help in a different way? Because we have to wait for that. So I'm supportive of having that conversation. Again, not talking about um the money that we will still need to open that day center, which has been set aside, but just the money that we didn't spend this year because we were never staffing it, which is what I understood that seven hundred thousand was for, or roughly that number. Um, and then number two, I'm just gonna make another pitch for potholes. I had another situation today, riding my bike to work where, you know, I was on Folsom and there's a crack there and like my wheel caught in the crack. And then like, I couldn't go to the right for curb, but there was a car coming to the left. Like, it it can be really catastrophic. We have to figure out whatever money we need to fill the potholes. And I think especially bike lanes, but also where cars go, that it is, it is not um an okay situation. And I understand what Natalie's saying about um, you know, it it being hard even to find contractors to do it. But I think what, whatever we need to to make happen in the budget for the roads that are ours, not for the state ones. I understand those are different and and we don't uh control those in the same way. But for our roads, we, we, as a city, again, nobody else can fill the potholes, only we can do that. Nobody else can go out there and fill them. We have nonprofits who can provide some of this other stuff. We have other government levels, but we have to fill the potholes. That's only us who can do it. We have to do it. It's a number one, Tara's thumbing me up. Thank you, Tara Weiner. So potholes, and I, I am sorry, but I'm not gonna play, I'm just not gonna play the zero-sum game. I would prefer that staff tell me where you think it's best that that money come from. Because I don't have uh the um, the in-depth knowledge of the budget and where it's gonna hurt least to move that money from. So that, that's how it was done earlier in my council career and I appreciated that because I think staff's closer to the full budget. So I'm declining with full respect to play the zero-sum game and and just saying, I want, I want us to get the potholes fixed, whatever that takes. And I defer to staff on how to make that happen. Thanks for listening to my two points.
Thanks, Rachel.
Can I come up with on that just for a second, Lauren? Just to, just to clarify, Rachel, what what we were hoping was that everybody would actually have a conversation with staff to try to understand um where, where things might come from. So we're hoping that folks can do that.
I'm happy to chat with staff. I just don't know that it needs to come from transportation department. Like, they're one of the few uh departments that's not increasing. They actually had a decrease this year. So uh, that's why, I mean, I'm happy to talk to every staff member, but I don't know that they want to spend their time talking to me or that's the most efficient.
Sorry, I should clarify finance staff, finance staff to talk, to talk with them.
I'll play. All right, Tara.
I'm gonna colloquy off of Aaron and say that that I am gushing from that outstanding budget. It's not easy to take all of us and to please all of us with different things from the menus of what we want. And I think you did a great job, and especially with the dedicated funding. And that's what I have to say a million thank yous. It was a great packet. I mean, I was fascinated by it. Am I the only one? I mean, I spent, I wanted to read it twice. I'm not gonna say I did, but I wanted to.
You're not the only one. We love the budget.
On that note, Mark, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I I I do want to support um Rachel with respect to the potholes. There's nothing that makes a government look less competent than the inability to maintain something as basic as your roads. Um, but I am also appreciative of what Nicole has said. I I don't think it's going to be very useful for us to come back in a couple of weeks with twenty-five requests without having any sense of where the money is going to come from for those requests. So whether it's talking to staff or or um uh or looking at the budget yourself, I I I just don't think it's going to be a productive conversation to have, you know, forty-five million dollars new funding requests with no particular way of of uh of paying for it. Um, but short of that, yes, you gotta, you gotta do potholes. Um, because nothing makes us look less competent than uh than poor streets.
Thank you, Mark. And I'm just gonna echo on what I've heard a lot of already, which is, I mean, you guys just did a really tremendous job putting this together. Thank you so much for all the hard work. I still have some threads that I might pull on, see what I can shake and where I can find some things that to cause trouble somewhere, but you've made my job really difficult in that arena. So thank you so much for that. And with no other items on tonight's agenda, unless anyone objects, I would like to close this meeting at nine fifty PM. Thank you all so much. And have a good evening.